More seats up front, so we will go ahead and get started. We'll call to order the August 23rd, 2018 Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming down. And the first item up is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you all looked at the agenda? Any additions, edits? Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Has been a motion to approve and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and your agenda is in front of you. Next is the approval of the August 1st, 2018 minutes. Those were given to you, mailed out to you earlier. I hope you've all reviewed those. Are there any edits or additions? So we'll need a motion to approve those particular minutes. Has been a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the August 1st minutes have been adopted. Now we're on to the recognition of council members. I want to thank all of the council members for coming down, and we take these as we see you all come in, so if now that you want to speak, come on up. But Councilman Mendez, I saw you first. You want to come on up right now? Come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm here just on an item on the consent agenda, number 16, so no comments.
Number 16, are you here in support?
I am in here in support.
All right. Thank you.
I'm the sponsor. It's changing the definition of financial institution to match some changes in state law and do a little cleanup, and so far, there's been no known objection to it.
Perfect. Thank you, councilman.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate you coming down.
Appreciate it.
Next, Councilwoman Murphy. She, do you want to speak during your item or?
Yes.
During our? Excellent. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Councilman Pulley?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I'll just wait until my agenda.
You want to wait for the agenda? No problem. Thank you, councilman. And councilman, come on up. Davis, Councilman Davis, come on up. Mr. Mendez already went. Come on up, councilman. If you want to speak now or during the item?
Actually.
Good to see you.
Think I'm okay, because thanks to the diligence of our planner, Sean Shepherd, awesome planner. Good choice, Bob, Lucy.
Excellent. That's a good shout, that's a good shout out to the team. I appreciate that.
We were able to confer, and I was going to ask for a deferral today, and we got it. The owner has agreed, and that's why I was coming to speak to you wonderful people. So thank you, planning staff, and I think we are working on something. What a lot of people never see is what the staff does behind the scenes, and we try hard on the council level, too, underneath my friend's leadership here and underneath the course of staff here, that we try not to bring disapproved items to the commissioners. We tried to work it out other ways first. Sometimes, you know, we want to do a good thing, but we can't see eye to eye. So this time, I think we're moving in the right direction. So we're trying to get as close to perfect as we can before we bring it to you. So I just want to thank you all for the time and glad to see that, you know, underneath our new leader, that we're still getting just as good and maybe, you know, an even better service.
Thank you, councilman. The staff does work really, really hard, and I appreciate that. That was item 34, that the councilman was speaking of it. Any other council members? I didn't see any other. We'll make sure we don't miss anybody. No? Okay. So now we're on to items for deferral. Lisa?
The following items are for deferral. Item 1A, 2018 CP 006 001, on page six of your agenda, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item 1B, 2018 SP 043 001, the associated case, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item 12, on page eight of your agenda, 2018 Z 038 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item 13, 2018 Z 039 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item number 15, on page nine of your agenda, 2018 Z 072 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer till September 13th. Item number 17, 2018 Z 005 TX 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item number 18A, on page nine of your agenda, 2018 CP 002 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. The associated case, 18B, on page 10 of your agenda, 2018 Z 051 PR 001, staff recommendation to defer to September 13th. Item 22, 2018 SP 050 001, on page 10, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item 27, on page 11 of your agenda, 2018 S 110 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. Item number 30, 2005 UD 005 006, on page 12 of your agenda, staff recommendation is to defer till September 13th, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 34, on page 13 of your agenda, 2018 Z 064 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to the September 13th meeting. Item number 35, also on page 13, 2018 Z 073 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to September 13th. And item number 36, 2018 Z 074 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Thank you. And so commissioners, items for deferral, let's go through the list, and Lisa, make sure I got these correct for the commissioners. So items for deferral withdrawal are items 1A, 1B, 12, 13, 15, 17, 18A, 18B, 22, 27, 30, 34, 35, and item 36. Is that correct? All right, commissioners, you've heard those items for deferral. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred. Now we are on to the consent agenda.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number 2, 2017 SP 064 001, on page six of your agenda, the 4927 Buena Vista Pike SP, a request to rezone to permit 34 multifamily units and eight single-family residential units on Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 5, on page seven of your agenda, 2018 SP 024 001, 1207 Pierce Road SP, a request to rezone to SP for properties located on Pierce Road to permit 28 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 6, also on page seven, 2018 SP 030 001, 224 Ben Allen Road SP, it's a request to rezone to SP for properties located on Ben Allen Road to permit 68 single-family lots, 62 multifamily units, and a maximum of 20,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 14, on page nine of your agenda, 2018 Z 016 PR 001, a request to rezone from IR to MULA for properties located at 425 Chestnut Street and 1201 Brown Street. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 16, 2018 Z 004 TX 001, a request to amend the Metro Code in regards to the definition of alternative financial services and financial institution and locational restrictions. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 21, on page 10 of your agenda, a request to rezone from IWD to SP to permit 130 multifamily residential units. This is the Ensley Avenue SP. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 23, on page 11 of your agenda, 2018 SP 051 001, 6022 Robertson Road SP, a request to rezone to SP to permit one single-family residential unit and one detached accessory dwelling unit. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 24, 2018 SP 053 001, the Hamilton Avenue Townhomes SP, it's a request to rezone to SP for properties located on Hamilton Avenue to permit 37 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 25, 2018 SP 054 001, the 927 40th Avenue North SP, it's a request to rezone to SP to permit, for properties located on 40th Avenue North, to permit six multifamily units, 5,000 square feet of retail, and 1,400 square feet of office. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 26, 2018 SP 055 001, the 806 Olympic SP, it's a request to rezone to SP for properties located on Olympic Street to permit all uses of MULA with an overall maximum building height of five stories and 60 feet. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 29, on page 12 of your agenda, 2018 S 130 001, Sunny Acres subdivision amendment. It's a request to amend a previously approved plat to remove the reserved parcel status on property located on Windermere Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 32, 2013 UD 002 0015, the Popeyes Restaurant, it's a request to modify the Murfreesboro Pike UDO on property located on Murfreesboro Pike to permit a modification of the frontage width standard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 33, on page 13 of your agenda, 79-87P 002, it's a request to revise a preliminary plan for planned unit development on property located on Hamilton Church Road to permit six single-family lots. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 37, 2018 Z 075 PR 001, it's a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 40 for property located along Lebanon Pike within the downtown Donaldson UDO. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 38, on page 14 of your agenda, 2018 Z 076 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 9A for property located on Ben Allen Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 39, 2018 Z 077 PR 001, a request to rezone from R 20 to IWD for property located on Couchville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 40, also on page 14, 2018 Z 079 PR 001, a request to rezone from IWD to MULA zoning for property located on Bind Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 41, 2018 Z 080 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6, properties located on Rosedale Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 42, 2018 Z 082 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 20A for properties located on East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 43, 2018 Z 084 PR 001, a request to rezone from SP to RM 20A for properties located on Delaware Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 44, on page 15 of your agenda, 2018 Z 085 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property located on 27th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 45, 2018 Z 086 PR 001, a request to rezone from IR to MUNA for property located on Third Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Under Other Business, on page 15 on your agenda, item number 46, a contract renewal for George Rooker. Item number 47, a contract amendment for Lisa Milligan. Item number 48, a certification, a certification of bonus height compliance within the DTC for 151 First Avenue mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from item 48. Item 49, a certification of bonus height compliance within the DTC for LC Sobro Building C mixed-use development. And item 53, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Excellent. So commissioners, you've heard the items, so let's go through these for consent. We'll go through these slowly because several were taking off the consent calendar, so we need to make sure we have the right ones. So on the consent agenda is items 2, 5, 6, 14, 16, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 29, 32, which by the way, I have to abstain personally on 32. Item 33, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, and 53. Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioners, long list, make sure we have this correct. You've heard those items for the consent, to pass on the consent agenda. Will need a motion to do that. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted, which means for the public, which, by the way, there are more seats up front if you're in the back and your legs getting tired, and we'll kind of let everybody get, move, and then if everybody could, if you want to find a seat, that'd be great. If everybody that's finished the business, if you could exit out as quickly as possible, we really appreciate it. That way, we can get on with. So that means we are going to hear 12 items, items, let's make sure we have this correct, too, Lucy. So. 11 items. So we have items 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 19, 20, 28, and 31. So if you're not here on those particular items, then you'll enjoy us listening to the planning commission. So we're on item number three. Go ahead. Presentation.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number three. Request is to rezone from R 20 to specific planned zoning to permit 31 single-family lots or a community, education, use, religious institution, orphanage, or daycare center. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions or disapprove without all conditions. The property included in the proposed SP totals approximately 19.87 acres and is located at 1120 Glendale Lane, at the northwest corner of Glendale Lane and Scenic Drive. The site is currently developed with the Monroe Harding Children's Home. As a point of reference, this is Glendale Lane bordering the site to the south, and this is Scenic Drive bordering it to the west. Duncanwood Court dead ends into the site right here, and Granny White Court dead ends into the site right here. It's noted that some of the existing structures on the site are eligible for the listing in the National Register of Historic Places. However, NRE listing does not afford protection of these structures. The property is currently zoned R 20, which requires a minimum 20,000 square foot lot, and is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes. The site sits within a larger area of R 20 zoning with some RS 20 zoning located to the north and east. Property is located in a large area of T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. A portion of the property lies in the conservation policy area. These areas of conservation represent multiple streams present on the site. The request proposes 31 single-family lots or one of the previously mentioned institutional uses. At this time, a site plan proposing only the development of 31 single-family lots has been submitted. The plan proposes a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. The site will be accessed by the extension of Duncanwood Court and Granny White Court, which are both identified as local streets by the major and collector street plan. The proposed SP includes standards pertaining to building materials and maximum allowed heights. Additionally, the proposed plan includes five-foot sidewalks and four-foot planning strips along Duncanwood Court, Granny White Court, and Glendale Lane, consistent with the local street standards. In staff's evaluation of the request, other possible development scenarios were analyzed. It's noted that under the site's existing R 20 zoning, a maximum of 33 single-family lots and 10 duplex lots could be created for a total of 53 units. Provisions within the cluster lot option of the zoning code would allow lots to cluster down to a minimum of 10,000 square feet while avoiding environmentally sensitive features. It's noted that any proposed subdivision would be subject to compliance with the requirements of the Metro subdivision regulations. The proposed SP is consistent with the goals of the land use policy for this site. The proposed plan includes only single-family lots at a lower density than currently allowed under the R 20 zoning. The plan allows for development that is consistent with the surrounding land uses while providing an adequate transition from the duplex lots along Granny White Court to the larger single-family lots along Duncanwood. Additionally, standards have been included in the SP to limit disturbance to the environmentally sensitive features of the site and mitigate tree removal. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. This completes the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing, and councilman, I think you're the applicant, so.
Sir.
Come on up. Appreciate you coming down. It's always good to see you. We'll give you two minutes for your rebuttal, too. No, go ahead, councilman. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Let me just walk you through how we got here today. So this is a rather unique parcel in our district. It's certainly the last like it, and I was notified by the Monroe Harding Director a while ago that they had intended to put this property on the market. So I met with the real estate committee that they put together and talked with them about my desires to see if the city could actually purchase this property. So we looked at it. I brought it to the mayor, and I brought it to the chief operating officer at the time, and we looked very hard at the ways we could potentially purchase this property. Unfortunately, that did not work, and so we were left with the property going back on the market. So, you know, I knew that the neighbors around here, Monroe Harding has an incredible mission, and it's very noble, and, but the institutional use of the property over the years has not come without hardships that the neighborhood has had to endure over the years. So that was a little bit of a concern here as well. So they went through the process of selecting a broker, and I was contacted by the broker after they made this selection, who informed me of what their entitlements were and the plan to build 37 homes there. After looking at that, I became a bit concerned about the safety and the harmony of the neighborhood, and I explored the possibility of seeing what we could do to help impact this, and so I talked with our attorney and our planner, and we arrived at the fact that based on those concerns, I filed an SP on the property to allow them the current institutional use of the property and their current entitlements that they received in the 2011 concept plan when they came before you several years ago. So once that, right before we filed the SP, we notified Monroe Harding and we notified their broker of our intent to file the SP, and that began basically a negotiation period and a series of community engagement platforms. I was concerned about the historic buildings on the property, so I contacted the historical commission to see what we could do about that, and he put a temporary block on demolition just so we could explore that, and the answer I arrived that was, there's really nothing we can do to stop anyone from destroying, from demolishing the buildings if they wanted to. So these series of small meetings were begun by Monroe Harding in order to get an idea of what the community would want. I asked them to expand that slightly, to expand that to include everyone who potentially is a neighborhood stakeholder in this, and we held several neighborhood group meetings with them to determine what the neighborhood really wanted and what they could do to accommodate those desires. After we held a number of those smaller meetings, we expanded it to a larger group, and what I did was quantified everything that I heard either at these meetings, on comment cards that were, which was provided to me, anything that was stated from the floor, any emails that I received, and any telephone calls that I took regarding this were quantified. I laid them out in columns. You know, if somebody wanted to talk about traffic, stormwater, anything they brought up as an issue, I itemized, and then we quantified it all and came up with a number of issues, which I brought to the Monroe Harding Board and began negotiations on these. We came up with five amendments to this SP based on that community feedback and began negotiating to see if they would accommodate them, and they did. The issues were stormwater. This runs along Browns Creek, and you may, mayor may not know, but there have been several rain issues that have caused quite a bit of consternation among my constituents over the past year or so, in addition to what we know we all endured back several years ago. So there is a heightened concern about stormwater around my entire district when these things occur. So they, they were agreeable to several concessions over and above what Metro currently requires relating to stormwater. Connectivity also was another issue, so as you can see by the concept plan, there was concern among a number of neighbors about connecting to Glendale because there was concern that this neighborhood would be used as a cut-through. So they came up with a plan to alleviate that issue. There was also construction traffic, which was a concern, so we negotiated and arrived at language that dealt with the construction traffic management plan. Another concern were there were a number of mature trees on the property, so we had our urban forester weigh in on this. We walked the property a number of times, and then we started negotiating with them regarding a tree survey over which we would have some level of control, and they did agree to that amendment. And finally, they also agreed to put a sidewalk out there on the frontage of the property on Glendale Lane. So I would like to commend them for the high level of integrity and character they showed during these negotiations. I very much appreciate the Monroe Harding Board and those with whom I have worked on this. So we brought this back to the community after we had all of these amendments to which they did agree based upon the feedback we received from the community, and you will hear from community members tonight. There are some who are very supportive of what we have accomplished, and there are some who do not believe this meets the bar, so I'm sure you will hear from them all. So I appreciate you all hearing from this, and I now put it into your lap to decide what to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate all your work on this. Now we are, the applicant has spoken. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Come on up, and you guys know the drill, and if you'll give us your name and your address, we appreciate you all coming down.
Chairman at the front, I'd like to clarify that Tom White, 315 Dedrick Street. I sent a request down as the attorney for Monroe Harding would be recognized as an organization for the front end. Five minutes?
Yes, sir. You get five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom White, 315 Dedrick Street. At the front end, I want to compliment Councilman Russ Pulley. What you heard was a classic narration. What you heard was a classic narration of how you get people involved in a process. I've heard many matters down here, as have you. I don't know that you'll ever hear any type of involvement or commitment for the participation in a community like you heard from the councilman, the staffs included, as well in that compliment. There were many neighborhood meetings, countless phone calls. This matter was deferred eight times here at the Planning Commission. This is what I call, it's a downzoning by consent. That's what's happened here. The client came forward with a proposal. The district councilperson felt there was a need for dialogue. It took place. An R-20 to an SP, you're going from basically, with the 43 units and 10 duplexes, 53 units, down to 31 single-family or the four allowed institutional uses. Big picture, it's consistent with policy. There's very significant support. The client has, to my knowledge, agreed with every condition requested from the different metro departments. I urge your approval. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. John Bryant, 217 Wilsonia Avenue. I'm a member of the Monroe Harding Board and I chair the Property Committee. I would also echo Councilman Pooley and Mr. White in thanking the commission for their consideration today and the planning staff for its involvement so far. Our organization got started in 1893. We're celebrating our 125th year this year, serving children and families in Middle Tennessee. We bought this property in what is now Green Hills in 1930. We've housed children on the property from that point until March of this year. Early in '17, we made the very difficult decision to close our last residential program on the Glendale Lane property. We just couldn't afford to sustain the financial losses that continued from that program. We continue to maintain three distinct programs: a foster care training and placement program, which is done through a contract with the state, an independent living program for older teens and young adults, and a youth resource center, which is housed at McHenry Methodist Church downtown. We will continue those programs, and we will continue our mission, but we don't need 22 acres in Green Hills to do so. We intend to relocate to professional office space. When we made the decision to sell, as Councilman Pooley mentioned, we met with metro representatives in parks about metro purchasing the property, and that was not to happen. We and Barlow Builders, our developer purchaser, worked cooperatively to come up with this plan over the course of many months. We recognize it doesn't please everyone, but we think it balances our property interests against the concerns of neighbors. We would ask your consideration and approval of this today. The proceeds of the sale will be used to further our mission, and we hope to continue on for another 125 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Scotty Burnick. I'm a landscape architect with Reagan Smith, 315 Woodland Street. We've been involving this plan since early January 2018, based on input from adjacent homeowners, neighborhood meetings, and site visits with city staff and Councilman Pooley. We've, based on the feedback we received from the neighborhood meetings, we've addressed five of the major concerns, vehicular access by removing the drive from Glendale Lane while still providing ingress and egress from the adjacent communities, which helps health, safety, welfare, emergency services, and connectivity. We have sidewalks throughout the rideaway as well as along the entire frontage of Glendale Lane. With stormwater, we're providing, and we're providing the required buffer and potential stream buffers for the site. We're keeping lots out of the floodplain. We're installing 42 native trees and 300 bare root seedlings. We've exceeded the current stormwater regulations. In terms of tree preservation, we've agreed to have a field-located tree survey, a certified arborist assess the tree species and health. Based on that, that allowed the urban forester to approve any tree that is removed on-site. In closing, we're far less density with 31 units as opposed to the 53 units. We're available for questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Hurst, 908 Montrose Avenue. I am the current board chair for Monroe Harding.
And I think we shorted you a few minutes, so two more minutes.
It won't be too much longer.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I appreciate your consideration today, and as a reiteration of what the councilman said, I appreciate the work that he has done with us over the past several months to work with the neighbors, to come to a resolution that we think is agreeable to Monroe Harding to allow us to move on, to continue our mission to help serve children in the child welfare system in Middle Tennessee, but to do so somewhere other than the current acreage that we exist on. We appreciate the input from the neighbors and appreciate your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Laura Falk, 4005 Sneed Road. I'm also on the board at Monroe Harding. I want to let you know that we've been good stewards of our property since we've owned it. We've been there, I've been on the board for several years. We've reforested the area down below in the floodplain, and that area will remain untouched. We're leaving that for the neighborhood. But we do need to move. We do need to be more available and accessible to the constituents that we serve and their families, and we do need the money to continue the services. The kids that we help, not many people in Nashville are helping. They're all in state custody. When they age out of foster care, their services are limited, and we try to provide those things like workforce development and mental health issues and housing for those children. So I hope you'll approve our plan today, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Jim Murphy, 1316 Duncan Wood Court. I'm in the very unusual position of being a neighbor to a development. I live right behind proposed Lot 6 in this plan, and I support this plan. This plan is much, much, much better than the plan that Monroe Harding had do as a matter of right. When we first started talking with Monroe Harding, they had a 37-lot plan that connected to Glendale. I'm only going to talk about connectivity, as some of you know that's my issue on this. I have a great deal of experience with connectivity. I used to live on a cut-through street, and the reason, one of the major reasons I moved was to get away from the cut-through traffic. And anyone who thinks we won't get cut-through traffic from southbound on Granny White and eastbound, I mean westbound on Glendale is sadly misinformed. We will constantly have traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons coming through our neighborhood where there are many, many small children. So I immediately, when I saw the 37-lot plan, started talking with the folks at Monroe Harding and expressing my strong opposition to their plan. Councilman Pooley helped us with, by filing the SP, which brought everybody to the table. He has done an extraordinary job in providing a plan that is supported by many of the people who would be adversely impacted by this project that live adjacent. So for that reason, I strongly support the project. I appreciate the work that Monroe Harding has done and that Barlow Builders has done to make this a much, much better plan than the one that they could do right now as a matter of right. So for that reason, I would request that you support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Walt Burton, 1304 Duncan Wood Court. I also live right behind the development, behind Lot 5. Won't rehash the history, but I would say, again, I voiced the same concerns that Jim had on the front end. We have a strong neighborhood and HOA. We got together and we voiced those concerns to Monroe Harding, and largely, they have responded with a much better plan than the initial plan that was proposed. We would all like nothing to happen at all and it stay just the way it is, but I think, given where we are and what the options are, I support this plan. We did co-author a letter, and we sent it with two additional conditions that we would like considered. One is to modify the existing island at the end of Duncan Wood Court, and also to add a tree buffer. A lot of the neighbors have planted trees between the Monroe Harding campus and our neighborhood. A lot of times with the permission of Monroe Harding, we'd like to see that preserved if possible. Thank you. I support the plan.
Thank you.
James Granberry. I'm in 1337 Duncan Wood Court, which is just above Lot 16 there. I support this plan. I support this plan because we've got a private landowner next door that could do this plan a lot denser than what they've decided to do, and they listen very well to our concerns as a neighborhood. It's not a perfect plan. We'd love to keep our cul-de-sac, but that's just not, that's not possible, and connecting through to Granny White Court is much better than connecting through to Glendale. I could go on and just repeat what you've heard from my other neighbors, but that's really kind of where I want to leave it. So I support the plan, and thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? So y'all, come on up, line up, if you would. You got two minutes, and we, oh. So, do you represent the neighborhood group?
I am.
That's fine. We'll give you five minutes, and welcome.
Thank you.
And just state your name and your address. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Lynn King. I live at 102 Braxton Hill Court, just off of Seaneck Lane, and thank you for the opportunity to speak and be heard by all of you. I'm representing a coalition of homeowners that have some significant concerns with this SP. We do thank Councilman Pooley for his work on this, but we do believe the SP does not provide us the protections that are needed. I'm compelled to state that our community is not against development. We would like reasonable development. And we have had different parties tell us, you better go with this plan, or you're going to be sorry if you don't. So we are coming before you to stand and say, we don't approve despite those statements. This development, we want development that conserves a historical building, preserves our urban canopy, fits the character of the neighborhood, as you can see it does not, minimizes impacted traffic, does not increase flooding in Browns Creek. First, I have to commend Monroe Harding on their mission. We all feel good about that. I myself am a court-appointed special advocate for neglected and abused kids that are in state custody, and I appreciate what they do. That said, the surrounding neighborhoods have several concerns with the SP, and we're asking you to disprove or delay the SP as it stands today until further conditions can be added. Specifically, we're asking for a reasonable development plan that is characteristic of the neighborhood. Traffic impact study, tree preservation plan, not just a survey, Browns Creek survey, to truly understand what the impact of removing 12 acres of grass and trees will do to the floodplain at the bottom of the property. And then also, independent review of the building structure. It is not dilapidated. Let me tell you why we are requesting additional protection. We cannot ignore, number one, the public interest in this property. And you can refer to the exhibits that have already been handed out to you, Exhibit A and B. Exhibit A is, indicates that this is a public, quasi-public-private property, as 91% of the funding for Monroe Harding for several, several years has come from public support for the buildings, for the programs, and for the land. So the petition that you have, which is called Keep the Green in Green Hills, Let's Keep Monroe Harding Historic and Green, outlines the Barlow Plan, and it was posted on change.org back in March, and we have over 600 signatures for Nashville and even more for the state of Tennessee. Again, it's a community asset. And by approving this SP, you're actually approving the demolition of a Nashville landmark in favor of density and money. The Planning Commission should be, would be representing the city's approval of destruction of history for new construction. You have the authority to save this historic landmark and for it to be used by the builder in another manner to still make money from it. The property has been identified by two historic commissions that is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places in 2011. It should be protected and not destroyed, and could the building not be saved and used for another purpose? That has not been, to our knowledge, in the meetings that we've been in, that has not been considered. In addition, we have an issue with density. The zoning of the surrounding neighborhoods, as Mr. Hill said, requires a minimum of 20,000 square feet, or almost a half acre per lot. The sizes of the lots to be developed are 7,500 feet. That is a significant difference from the 20,000-foot minimum requirement for R-20, and that's what's surrounding it. I know it's an SP, and they're asking for something different. This is high-density development in a low-density neighborhood, and the acreage of billable land in the SP is misleading, as it is stated today. The acreage of the buildable land in the SP is minus 20 acres, minus eight acres of floodplain on which nothing can be built, and that is not represented clearly at all in the SP. There's no mention of the floodplain. It is misleading not to include the floodplain in the calculation of the acreage for the development, and there are less than 12 acres on which to build the 31 homes, not 20 acres. Please take that into consideration when you're doing the math. Furthermore, the SP in Austin-Pennanton's plan include removal of hundreds of trees from Nashville's urban canopy, and we're already losing 50,000 trees at a minimum per year. There is a tree survey in the SP, but it is lacking in depth, and we would like an actual tree preservation plan that is proactive. Two minutes?
No, ma'am.
That was five!
That was five.
All right.
It goes by quick.
It does.
And you can tell other people behind you if you missed something, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Sorry about that.
I'm Herman Parton. Live at 1114 Britmee Drive, and I urge you to disapprove of the SP unless further conditions are met. I want to focus on density. I will review what has been said on density and be maybe a little bit more specific. I request a density evaluation in this SP, which proposes a high-density urban development within a low-density suburban neighborhood. The SP states that the property has 19.87 acres permitting 31 single-family homes. There is no mention in the SP that this includes eight acres of floodplain or other environmental sensitive features intended to be permanently maintained as open space. These eight acres reduce the buildable land to just 12, under 12 acres. These eight acres in the floodplain can never be developed, we hope, and should not be included in the calculation of density and number of homes. 12 acres instead of 19.87 acres changes the actual density and the resulting implications. Neighborhoods, not neighborhood, but neighborhoods. Neighborhoods surrounding the property are included in the T-3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy for lower density, single-family residential with open space, natural features, and natural features. These are home sites with mature trees, large front and backyards, and with setbacks from the street. The high-density development with a low-density suburban neighborhood is, number one, inappropriate. Number two, contrary to the character of the neighborhoods. This proposal attempts to shoehorn 31 houses into 12 acres. This is not in scale and does not fit in. Our neighborhoods have RS-20, R-20 zoning, and lot sizes are a minimum of 20,000 square feet per house. The staff report states that the SP supports the neighborhood policy. Due respect, I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Miller, and I live at 1146 Granny White Court. I am at the bottom of the hill from Monroe Harding. Please understand, my argument and my worries are nothing to do with what the mention of Monroe Harding. I donate to these folks. I've spent time with these folks. I have been loved having them as neighbors, and I appreciate the planning department for adding the conditions. Unfortunately, I have a couple of scary parts about this. First of all, I was going to have, I had notes and knew what I was going to say, but I've thrown that all out. The numbers don't work with regard to density. I just ask that you double-check it. I ask that you defer all this and double-check a lot of the stuff that are in here. For example, the sign, the historic home. The builder has the discretion to do anything he wants to. He has, does not have to replace anything. He doesn't have to use the materials in other places, and that's fine, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The part about the trees, I was on the Tree Advisory Committee for a long time. I know that trees die. I know that trees get old, and I know they're diseased. I know that Monroe Harding has a bunch of trees that are dead, but also on that campus, you have trees that are 200 years old, and they're historic trees, and we need to do what we can to save that. All I'm asking is that we have someone other than the builder's arborist do the tree work, and that could be volunteers from the Tree Advisory Committee or any of the, many other tree people in Nashville, like we call ourselves "tree people." The traffic being diverted down Granny White Pike, you're asking for real problems. Granny White Pike is a nightmare as it is, and to add all that traffic down from those two streets, if there was a chance in hell that both of those trees, those streets got blocked, you couldn't get emergency equipment up to the development. Glendale needs to remain open. Period. End of conversation. It just needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Deborah Evans, and I live at 100 Braxton Hill Court, and I'm sorry, I've never spoken in public before, so here I go. I want to focus on saving the historic building designed by Henry Hibbs. Henry Hibbs designed this building in 1930. It's listed on, is possibly being on the Historic Registry. It's one of Nashville Nine. You see it as Exhibit C, I believe. And Henry Hibbs is a very significant Nashville architect. He designed Fisk Library, Building Song, you know, Vanderbilt, Skerritt Bennett, Rhodes College, Davidson College, the list could go on. Davidson College, the list could go on. And I don't see anywhere on this plan that it's even considered, you know, as significant. And it's a very significant building. I've heard from the developer, I've tried to speak, that it's old, it's not worth saving, it's insignificant. Well, you know what? They probably said that in 1974 about the Ryman Auditorium. And look where we are today. So I'm just saying, if you say yes to this destruction, you know, I mean, yes tonight, you're saying yes really to destruction of part of Nashville's history, and I'm a lifelong Nashvillian, and that's not okay to me. And I kind of look at Monroe Harding's history, what a wonderful multicultural, you know, multi-generational history this building has represented for them. And I would just like for you somehow to consider some kind of other use for it, whether it be, you know, a clubhouse or a community building, something that the neighborhood could really appreciate, and the history is still there. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. You did great on your first time speaking.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Levens. I live at 100 Braxton Hill Court. I am a resident of Nashville for 15 years, and I'm also a small business owner here in the city. I'd like to speak to you a little bit about the graphic that you see above you, above us, on your screens, I would imagine. The outline of the yellow shows a very large plot. It's been described by one of the advocates as 22 acres, then again as 19.87 acres, as being the developable property amount. Well, as you can see by the greenery towards the east, excuse me, there is a very large area that's considered part of the floodplain, as well as a wildlife refuge. That's my wording. We live in the neighborhood. We see wildlife in that neighborhood all the time. I have photographs on my phone that show the deer, the other wildlife that live in that area, which we all know will be impacted by this type of a development. Additionally, we had most recently, as of last year, a flood in our area. We live just upstream from this developed area. Upstream means any type of additional development that won't allow for the proper runoff is going to affect us upstream. We have a very large S-shaped bend in the creek just at the intersection of Biltmore and Scenic Drive, which has affected the flow. Any downstream additional restrictions would affect the upstream flow and increase the flooding of our neighbors right there on Scenic Drive. The greenery areas that, we're talking about dispersing the trees, when you increase the developed area such as concrete and asphalt, you end up reducing the absorption square footage on the earth, which will then increase the runoff. Where's that runoff going to go? Yes, there are retention areas planned, but that then runoff goes into the creek additionally, more so than what does now. We think that's a big problem for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name is Michelle Hall. I live at 1312 Duncanwood Court. I would like you to delay this SP. I would like y'all to do a traffic impact study by Metro. It needs to be done by the Metro Traffic Division. Since 1934, Monroe Harding's entrance has been at 1120 Glendale Lane. The architect could add an additional entrance or exit on Glendale with a traffic light to slow the traffic down. That's a big complaint about the neighbors. At one point, reportedly 90 employees use this entrance, and this should continue to be the case of the new homes. If a ring route is completed in the subdivision, then there's no need to disturb over 100 homeowners on three other streets. The current plan to open up two dead-end streets that were designed in the 1950s is dangerous. Granny White Court and Duncanwood Drive do not have any stoplights onto Granny White Pike. This is a fast arterial urban road which connects Woodmont Boulevard to Harding Place. Lipscomb University, Lipscomb Academy, JT Moore, and Lipscomb Elementary will be affected by the traffic congestion. There is a Friends Life organization that is home to special needs young adults located right on the corner of Duncanwood Drive and Granny White Pike. Residents take walks daily with supervision. Sorry. Neighbors who have a difficult time coming out of these streets now will have an impossible time without the benefit of streetlights. Children crossing the street to go to school or college will not be able to do as a sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street. Emergency vehicles, I think, were mentioned. The 2014 Metro Nashville Green Hills Transportation Plan calls for Granny White Pike as an urban thoroughfare. The plan approved a bike plan from Harding Place to Woodmont Boulevard as the mayor's Transportation and Sustainability Department and the Bike Ride Program. This is a very dangerous plan to add an additional 62 cars and cyclists trying to go down the street. Additionally, both Duncanwood Court and Duncanwood residents never had a private meeting. Also, I'd like to implement a timeframe, five years, and preserve Lot 152 from being developed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi there. I'm Patsy Parton at 114 Brookmead Drive, and I'm urging you to disapprove the SP unless further conditions are met. I'm here to focus on traffic and request that traffic impact study for residential areas. I believe the SP mentions for institutional areas. And it's important that we look at Granny White Pike and Glendale Lane. I sent some photos in. They were emailed in, and then there's Exhibit D for you to refer to. You can see how heavily traffic happens on Granny White Pike, especially during the morning and afternoon rush hours and the school opening and closing times. This SP has a plan for unsafe issues regarding traffic. All the traffic will enter and exit from Granny White Court and Duncanwood Court. And these are 1950 roads. They're narrow. The visibility is limited, and the roads were never built to handle this amount of traffic. There are 112 families that live on the four roads that are impacted. That's Duncanwood Court, Granny White Court, Duncanwood Drive, and Brookmead Drive. And we all exit onto Granny White Pike. And that is a very arterial road, as Michelle has said. There are four school zones along that stretch, and also vehicles that are exiting I-65 heavily travel that stretch of road. There is no traffic light at Granny White Court or Duncanwood Court. I try to get out that each day almost. You cannot turn left during those rush hours, and many times you can't turn right. Increasing traffic is not appropriate and is contrary to the character of our neighborhoods. Our roads are maxed out, and the infrastructure does not support the safe addition of 62 more vehicles. You can use the wider, less-travel road of Glendale Lane and eliminate all of these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Margot Owen. I live at 1333 Duncanwood Court. And first, I would like to commend all the parties involved for coming up with this plan. I think it's fairly reasonable, and I would like to make a special plea to Monroe Harding to preserve Lot 152, which is out of the screen but part of the sale, as part of the buffer, the environmental conservation easement along Browns Creek. It's currently, I think, being sold to the developer, along with this parcel. That's under consideration. Second, I'm hoping that a tree preservation plan can be put in place before this is approved. The current version of the SP only references trees of 24 inches in diameter or greater. However, this cuts out a large number of perfectly healthy, valuable trees on the site because there are smaller variety of trees like dogwood and holly that will never grow to 24 inches in diameter. And also, the larger varieties, the oaks and the sycamores, that are 10 to 23 inches in size, are just reaching the prime of their life. And this is like a person in their 20s or 30s, you know, just being cut down. So I believe that the survey and careful consideration should be given to all trees of any diameter, but if we need to write something in the SP, you know, 10 inches or greater in diameter. And I just wanted to also state that the mayor signed an executive order in January that states that our urban canopy is a utility that improves air quality, manages stormwater, supports public health, provides economic benefits, and increases the quality of life for Nashville residents. So please take action to protect this natural infrastructure in this case and in all planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Hank Keeling. I live at 1145 Duncanwood Drive. I generally think the plan is reasonable with one exception, and that is I don't think it provides enough connectivity. There was an earlier plan, I think the original one that Barlow submitted, which would have extended Park Glen across, from the south, across Glendale and connect Glendale in with Duncanwood Court and Granny White Court. I think that would be a lot more preferable plan in terms of connectivity than this one, though this one it does at least get rid of two of the dead-end streets. I think we have a lot of problems in Nashville, and particularly in Green Hills, with a lot of cul-de-sac neighborhoods that have a lot of concentrated housings, all emptying onto one artery. And that's why we have the kind of congestion we have on roads like Hillsborough Road and Granny White Pike and so on. And so if we could link all the neighborhoods together, I think it would help generally with traffic. It won't eliminate the congestion. There's still going to be more and more cars on the same streets, but I think the flow would be a lot easier if we could have a little more connectivity. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Fairbanks. I live at 4510 Shays Hill Road. I live right now currently next door to a Barlow building project. And I feel like we've been held hostage to these builders, total lack of linear thinking and repetitive doing and undoing. I'm aware problems arise in all projects. However, as my mom always said, it's not the what, it's the how. And who do we turn to after the unintended consequences of these projects reveal themselves? We're left to our own devices to begin the calls downtown to any department that will listen, and the problem solving inevitably dealt with at homeowner's own expense. But hey, my property values are going up, right? It's been an awful 14 months. We've waited for the completion of this project. The property was clear-cut by the previous owner, Mr. Ewing, about four or five years ago. 100-year-old red oaks that took 80,000 gallons of water, gone. And the ensuing water issues. Mr. Pennington has to build a rain garden. It was his choice out of three. We'll see how that goes. But unfortunately, Mr. Pennington and other builders such as him will pack up their gear and go on to the next neighborhood mugging. I stand with my neighbors as far as this is concerned. I don't, I'm not, I don't live, I live on Shays Hill, but I can tell you what it's like to watch a property that's been clear-cut with the bobcats going up and down and up and down, changing the terrain, and the Barlow builders' total lack of empathy to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one else, councilman rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We'll close this, seeing no one else wishing to speak. We'll close this item for public hearing. Vice Chair, you want to go first? Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. I have some questions about the building, but I'm going to leave that to the Historic Commission representative to ask about. So I had a number of questions, I guess. First, I was, I mean, I know we're looking specifically just at the site plan for 31 single-family lots, but I'm not used to seeing a specific plan that came with so many alternative uses also included. And if another site plan came with, you know, it seems like, it sounds like this is the road they're on, and we're going to, it's going to be redeveloped with residential, but this leaves the door open for a lot of different things as well, which could create a whole different set of issues for the community. So it makes me a little bit apprehensive just knowing the range of things that could eventually happen on this property. I mean, if this plan doesn't go forward, you know, maybe some of these other uses would be much better. It would maintain the existing use, but it also could open up a whole other set of issues that we would not have any control over at that time, and there's no conditions that would address those other uses. So I guess I was wondering if you could kind of explain the rationale behind that?
Yes, so this is a site plan-based SP. So at this time, the only site plan that's been submitted is for the 31 residential lots. So they wanted to come in for, in one of the institutional uses that are permitted that be considered amendment and change to this site plan. So it would be back before you, before any of that happens.
So we would see anything like that again?
That's correct. And also, there's a note placed on the cover of this plan that requires the TIS be completed prior to any of those institutional uses.
Okay. Okay. That helps. So obviously, there's been a lot of discussion around the tree survey, and I am not terribly familiar with our urban forestry requirements. And the statements that have been made that we're relying on the builder's arborist and not, but it looked to me like we do have a condition that brings in Metro. But can you kind of explain to us how that would work?
Absolutely. So also, a note included in the plan, there's a tree survey note that was developed in coordination with the Metro Urban Forester that requires a tree inventory survey to be completed that assesses the health and the size of trees prior to removal. This is in addition to the tree density unit requirements the Metro code has for, just in the zoning code. So it gets a lot more oversight to the urban forester to have oversight in any tree removals prior to them being removed.
So we could have a situation where the site plan was not feasible based on findings of the urban forester?
It's possible. This site plan creates lots rather than building footprints. So I think the idea behind that note is to shape the building footprints based around that tree survey.
Okay. Okay. And then access off of Glendale Lane, obviously, that's the existing access on, one of the existing access points, and I see that it's a requirement for construction. Is that, where did that part of the access change during the review process?
That was through consultation, as the councilman said, with the neighborhood and to address concerns there of a leavelessism.
Let me say, I think from a staff perspective, we would have preferred to see the access remain on Glendale because I think it does, from our judgment, improve sort of the circulation on the site and meet those goals. But we did two things. We took a step back and looked at the overall circulation network and asked, would that connection meet really important, sort of broader, goals for connectivity? And I think in this instance, we saw that if we were able to have two connection points, those would, you know, go a long ways towards meeting those goals. And then we also wanted to understand if we were creating any fire safety issues. And in this instance, we were not. And so, as you all know, we sort of struggle with connectivity on the commission, and we do try to hear what the neighbors' concerns are and their view of the character of the neighborhood. I will say, we saw two, maybe even three iterations that showed different types of connections, and there was one that had two cul-de-sacs essentially. And so we felt that this really was more of a compromise on the circulation issues, but it did meet the two basic thresholds that we had. I mean, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that this is an improvement. I do think, you know, having, I drive this route periodically, trying to get down to soccer at Oak Hill from downtown, and everybody's right. These streets have gotten terrible, and every cut-through street's gotten terrible. And so, and the pocket neighborhoods creates a whole separate set of challenges. So I really feel like any opportunity we have to try to improve some connectivity, we should take advantage of. I mean, I think that's a pretty important goal, especially in these rapidly changing, redeveloping neighborhoods. So that is a concern. You know, I have had the opportunity to work with Monroe Harding in several capacities over the years, and love what they do, think it's an amazing organization, and certainly appreciate the need to generate additional revenue to support their operations. That said, that's not a planning rationale. And I think there's a lot of issues that have been raised, and I imagine I'll hear some more from my fellow commissioners that raise some serious concerns for me with this plan.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I guess I definitely have been aware too of Monroe Harding's mission for a while, and it's understandable of wanting to change and to grow and to do something different. But first, I'll kind of... But first, I'll kind of talk about, those dead-end streets have been, they are an issue when you're driving through it, and I do understand that, and all of a sudden, you are cutting through Monroe Harding's campus. So I have done that before, and I understand that, you know, that concern. So trying to improve the connectivity is, you know, that is good. I'm a little bit, as Commissioner Joe, Jessica brought it, the connectivity off of Glendale. I think the way that it was, that it is now is still, even the way it works with the terrain is kind of historic. I wish there was a way, and I guess you said that there were two iterations that did try to keep it. But some connectivity off of Glendale, I still feel, could it be worthwhile in this case? But of course, my biggest issue is the historic building. So first, let me ask, did you see any iterations that kept it, kept any of them?
I did not. We did ask to the councilman's note, we did ask early on what the sort of designation was for this property and whether or not any assessments had been done to its condition.
So that's the most disappointing. I can't, it's like there's never even a, just a chance to try to look and see how you can preserve such a rich history, as one of the persons that came up said. Henry Hibbs is one of the more famous Nashville architects, the history of Nashville, and to just see his buildings and just raised without even a, here's an option that we looked at and it didn't work, kind of option, is really, really disappointing. When you look at this area, I think someone talked about the old trees here as well, but you think about these structures that have had such a long history, and you're looking at a neighborhood format that you don't want, I feel like it's not even a good planning idea to just completely disregard it, you know, incorporate it. I'm for density, I'm for, in general, even this solution, but to not even, you know, look at an idea that may have kept especially this one important structure, but I feel like it's just, you know, it's almost like you should go back, you should go back to the drawing board to attempt to look at this, because, you know, yes, this is the easy way to do it, to get, you know, your 31 lots, but is that really the best way to use something that has such a richness already to it? So it's hard for me to, you know, I know in here that it's not protected, and we know the way it goes, you know, it has to be protected by the owner, and if the owner has no reason to try to do it, then it doesn't, can't get to it. But, you know, I understand the Historic Commission did give the 90 days, but I feel like the developer, this is not on Monroe Harding, this is on the developer, I feel like they should look at how we can incorporate this. You've got this, this is even a historic neighborhood in a sense that you're just kind of wiping out. So it's hard for me to be for something like this that doesn't take into account that some of the richness, I mean, richness of the terrain, richness of the area, richness of the properties that are already on the site, so. So, and I understand that there was a recommendation for the habs, and of course, if, you know, that's just kind of like, okay, well, we're going to tear it down, but we're going to document it. But it's, you know, it's gone, you know, it's like written in a history book. So anyway, that's my feeling about it.
Councilman?
So the councilman can force them to preserve the building, and we cannot force them to preserve the building, the city can force them to preserve the building, but nobody can force me to vote for this either. So from my point of view, I just can't support something that doesn't even have a little easement there to protect a building that is such an important structure. And the same goes with the trees. I mean, there is so much detail on these drawings, why couldn't you just identify the trees that are significant and just exclude them from the drawing? I mean, there are options for people to do that. It's just an offset tool on addic to do that. You could just share with the community that you are interested in accommodating that. Now, when it comes to density, that's, you've got to make it work, so I know people don't like traffic and that, but it's just kind of hard to argue, but the historic building preservation and the tree preservation is too important to me to support this, so I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner, lecture.
So I guess some of the major items have already been hit, traffic, trees, and the historical structure, and I thought Commissioner Tibbs did a great job explaining the, I guess, sadness over the not even attempting to save that structure. I wanted to ask about the current entitlements under that property. It sounded like a lot of the, it sounded like, maybe not a lot, but some of the neighbors who were in support of the project were in support because the current entitlements would allow 53 units, and this proposed SP only allows 31, but the 53 would be allowed, assuming under all ideal circumstances and subject to the subdivision regulations being complied with. So do we have an idea, as the subdivision regulations, and taking into consideration the environmentally sensitive features of this property, do we have an idea of what actually could be located on this property as far as the number of lots?
Yes, so there's two scenarios that could kind of play out. As you know, it's R-20, so there's a concept plan that could be submitted with 20,000-square-foot lots, and then there's also the cluster lot provisions that allow some to cluster down to 10,000-square-foot lots. Probably, under the cluster lot subdivisions, a closer estimate would be, you would be able to yield about 36 single-family lots and then nine duplex lots. So you're still looking at 45 total units there, so it's still an increase of the 31. The original numbers of 53 is just like you said, based solely on the acreage and then the density permitted, but yes, the provisions of the subdivision regulations would probably limit that total number.
So if so, I'm assuming that your number that you just quoted, that's assuming that those, I think it was eight acres perhaps that were floodplain, that subtracted out?
Yes, more, that's taken to effect, and it's actually a more accurate number, it's probably about four acres, and that's total floodplain and floodway.
Okay.
So it's four acres.
And is the cluster lot option, is that something that they could automatically take advantage of?
Yes, that is, if they meet the provisions within the zoning code, they can do that today.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Michelle?
Okay, I just wanted, legal to clarify what this quasi-public-private question that was brought up by one of the speakers stating that the land is somehow publicly and privately controlled. It was also in a couple of the--
--funding sources that receive a lot of private grant funding. Monroe Harding.
Just to put, I think she was talking about funding sources, not, perhaps not land ownership is what I heard.
Okay, so it's irrelevant.
Right.
Okay.
The land is privately owned by Monroe Harding?
Okay. Another thing is, I heard people talk about the reasonable characteristics in the neighborhood, and I was trying to look at the lot sizes, for example, on Duncanwood and some of the other ones nearby, and it doesn't really seem that this is more dense than those. So I wondered, how is this different, really, from the other areas nearby?
Yes, so the lots along Duncanwood Court were a part of the concept plan that came from 2011, I believe, and that was a cluster lot subdivision. So the average lot size of those homes are the 10,000 square feet that's allowed in the cluster lot subdivision. What's being proposed in this SP is a minimum lot size of 7,500. That's a minimum, doesn't necessarily preclude the applicant from making those lots larger, probably based on the floodplain and stormwater regulations. So it's consistent with the homes, the lots that exist today along Duncanwood.
Can you tell me which one of these lots has the Hibbs building right now?
Not for certain, no, I cannot.
So I really agreed with what Commissioner Tibbs said.
It looks like it's lots seven, eight, and nine.
Like lots seven, eight, and nine.
Would it be helpful to look back at the aerial that we have? Would that help?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, of the existing. So it doesn't translate to the lot layout, but you can see.
And the Hibbs building is the big one there or the one to the right?
The larger main building here.
The larger one there. So it kind of goes across a bunch of the lots. Well, I really agreed with what Commissioner Tibbs said. Seems that they have met. I really admired the way the councilman worked with everyone. I really admired the way everyone seemed to try really hard to make compromises and work together. I don't think this issue of where, whether it connects to Glendale or not is solvable because it seems like about half the community thinks it should connect and half thinks it shouldn't, and so that, to me, isn't the deal breaker. And the only thing that has me sad about this is the fact that there wasn't an effort to try somehow to incorporate that building into the plan. So I think, I just want to think about it a little bit more.
Commissioner Del.
Well, I think I fall in the same category. I think, first of all, I think the councilman and the neighborhood and Monroe Harding have done an excellent job of coming up with a very good solution that solves a lot of issues, no solution's perfect. And the largest heartburn I have too is about the historic portion of that building. I live in a historic building that 10, 12 years ago had a tree growing out of it. So, you know, things can, you've got to work to save these buildings, and Henry Hibbs and some of the work that he's done is worth that effort, and I am disappointed that it wasn't there. I really wish we could get a little bit more attention paid to that, and maybe not, when I saw the aerial photo, I think some of that is not all part of the original structure, when there's some additions on to that, if I'm not mistaken. Not that familiar with the property, but, so I'm kind of following along with other commissioners and saying, I really think that if there's any way we could get more definition of that, I would feel a lot more comfortable about it. I do think that they've made a great effort so far, so.
Any other discussion?
Can, just procedurally, I mean, if, I think that a lot of the comments that we received suggested deferring and getting additional conditions. I don't know if we can get an additional condition that will satisfy the desire to preserve the historic building, but I guess I just wonder if that's something that we should discuss.
Well, there's probably two options. So there's probably procedurally, Lucy and I, probably there could potentially be a deferral motion, but it would have to solve, you know, some of the concerns that the commission, that you all have stated. Or there's a, you can make a motion to disapprove or make a motion to approve. So there's really three procedural ways that you can go. Now, if we did defer it, I'm not sure if we could get to a position where everyone's comfortable. I don't know, though, we might. Lucy, any?
I mean, I think if the purpose of the deferral is to understand whether or not the historic structure could feasibly be reused or what assessments have been made, I mean, you could ask the applicant to prepare some information about how they assess the structure. I think Commissioner Tibbs well laid out the sort of legal issue that we have, which is that this is an eligible structure, so it does not, that's a more of an, it does not have protection, the same kind of protections that we would have if it were, say, a local historic landmark, where we would have a more stringent review, and where historic would have a more stringent review. So I do think there is a legal framework to be aware of, but as you say, you've expressed the concern about, you know, wanting to protect that as a resource, and so we could certainly ask the applicant to come back and give us information about what work has been done. I don't know that we could reasonably compel them for those, that legal sort of framework to use that structure, I would say, if that makes sense. Yes. And the other question, and this was raised by one of the commenters, but the difference between a tree preservation survey and a tree, the tree survey that's been done, can someone explain the difference between those and if that's an additional condition that we might consider?
So I believe the site has been walked with the Metro Urban Forester, and official tree inventory, I don't believe, has been prepared, is to be, based on the tree note that's on the plan, would be submitted with final SP in coordination with the urban forester.
Okay. But we could consider, if we did decide to think about a deferral, we could consider the possibility of actually getting a, you know, a survey, an official inventory of the trees? I think typically, that kind of work is done at the final phase, when you have more detailed information. This is one of the more stringent requirements I've seen. What we have, the condition number four. Six. For six, pardon me. So, but if, on this one, I would say, if there's something additional you would want to add to this condition, that might be a more effective way of accomplishing our goal of responding to some of the comments. I'm not sure that moving that up in the review process is the most effective way to accomplish what I'm hearing.
And I would add that, you know, whatever we say on this particular case, that we create precedence for, you know, other cases as well. So I just, to be, you know, we always strive to be consistent and not inconsistent, so I wanted to add that as well. So anything that we do now, as a requirement, you know, or asking, potentially, it could lead to that requirement moving forward.
Well, I don't, I'm not ready to make a motion one way or the other, I just was curious what we could think about.
It's good, very good discussion.
Yeah, I'd actually be concerned about doing the actual condition, so I'm just going to make a motion to disapprove.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? That's a proper second, it's properly seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Of the, this is in favor of the disapproval. Anyone oppose? Seven ayes for disapproval.
Maybe a hand.
Yeah, let's do a hand, that way we get it all. So all those in favor of the disapproval, raise your hand. All those oppose?
And can we just clarify for the record why for the disapproval, so that we have, I mean, I think you've sort of said that, but it would be useful just to summarize.
Could you replay my, my motion of disapproval was based on the fact that, well, first on the connectivity from Glendale, using historic terrain that wasn't looked at at all, also and mostly because of the historic structure and the prominence of, first, the architect who did it is a prominent Nashville architect, NES Building is amongst many, but also, the building itself, along with this historic part of Green Hills, and there was no attempt to try to incorporate that into the new development.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more? That's plenty. All right, it's disapproved. We're on to item four. Hold on, let's see what our timeframe is. We probably need to continue a few more unless, we probably need to try to get through some more since we only did one of 11. If that's okay with commissioners, unless, I mean, all right. Item four. And if, wait one second, if everybody that is associated with this case, if y'all could, the former case, if y'all could quickly step outside, we really do appreciate everybody coming down and very, very much. We'll wait a few minutes. We'll wait a few minutes, just a few seconds.
All right. Item four. The next item on the agenda is item number four. This is a request to rezone property from the RS-10 zoning district to SP zoning to permit 24 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is located in the single-family residential RS-10 zoning district. Nearby zoning districts include the R-10, RS-10, and the IWD zoning districts. The site is located north of the intersection of Curry Road and Vincent Drive. The site is located in the conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy areas. Conservation policy is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to maintain the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. Enhancements may be made to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity within the policy area. The site consists of three vacant parcels totaling 5.15 acres. The proposal includes 24 detached multifamily residential units in the form of cottages, associated parking, on-site stormwater mitigation, sidewalk improvements along Curry Road, and a new public street. Four units are oriented toward Curry Road, with remaining units located in the interior of the site. Site access is from Curry Road through a new public street and a private access drive. A private drive loops around 20 units located in the center of the site. Each unit in this proposal has attached parking. Also, there are two areas for surface parking totaling 14 parking spaces. The plan provides sidewalk improvements on Curry Road alongside frontage, consistent with the standards of the major inflector street plan. The plan also provides a public street that will set up a future road connection to the adjacent property north of the subject site. This plan provides additional housing choices while maintaining the existing suburban pattern of development within the immediate area. The proposal also provides for an additional connectivity, also provides for additional connectivity to the broader neighborhood through a new public street that sets up a future connection with property north of the site. Given the aforementioned, staff recommends to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. And applicant has 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates. Been working on this property for probably six months to maybe, probably the first of the year, or maybe even before that. But my client had a community meeting in the very beginning, met with the community, you know, got a lot of input. This is a unique piece of property, although it's always owned RS-10 there, it's surrounded by duplexes. There's the property to the east, I guess, is maybe one of those old zone lot divisions, where you had duplexes that lots, you know, the lot actually went through the house. And so it's quite dense. And a lot of properties to the south are also duplexes. The property to the north is, I think it's interesting, after all the discussions you had, the property to the north actually has a lot of historic significant features on it. And my client had, or probably still does, have an option to the property to the north. And so when we came to the planning commission, I basically showed them a plan that was much more dense, and actually had a lot of dense development on the parcel to the north as well. But after looking at the historic features, I know that there was a couple of meetings with Ms. Curry, who I believe is here today, I actually met her myself on the site, it was decided that this, that there needed to be an overall plan put together to look at the development of this area. And so a plan was put together to look at possibly doing a cluster lot subdivision to the north, and then the road that you see here is going to provide an access to that, and provide a network of streets that don't exist today. Then also, to the north, and maybe to the east, is a big public park. And so this road that you see here will eventually provide connectivity with sidewalks, and there are no sidewalks in this area, but a road that would actually go through this development, and then go through this other large parcel of land, and then eventually connect to the park. As I mentioned, to the east, there's a lot of duplexes, a lot of dense development. And so in order to make this transition, because the houses across the street on Curry Road are fairly large, it was decided that we would put houses along the furniture of this property, make them very deep and very large, so they would somewhat match the houses that are across the street. And then the houses on the corner of this proposed access road would have more or less a double front edge, it would front both those streets, Curry Road and the adjacent street. You can see to the north, there's these dashed lines, there's a floodway, there's floodway buffers there. It's pretty much developed all the way around it, so it's a very unique, small parcel. I think when I looked at the staff report, I believe they said that based upon the current zone, you could have 22 units, this is asked up to 24. So there's no real increase of density being requested here. It's just more or less trying to provide a transition from existing duplexes to these detached, single-family. I know that it's called multifamily when you look at your staff report. It's always confusing to the community when they see that. I have a lot of people that call me when they first get those yellow postcards and, you know, or whatever, and talks about multifamily. And they think that something's going to be attached. Well, these are detached, single-family. I don't, I know you consider multifamily, but I guess, people that I talk to, I try to discourage the use of that word, because it doesn't really represent what's being proposed. So we spent a lot of time working on this, a lot of times with Forest Service Services, providing adequate storm drainage and buffers. And I think we came up with a pretty good plan after many, many, many revisions. So I think that's all I really have right now. I'll save two minutes to see what the community has to say, and then hopefully I can respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will reserve your two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. If y'all could line up, that would be great. Appreciate y'all coming down. You have two minutes. Please state your name and your address. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Sarah Brindley. I live at 936 Curry Road. I live on the, on the, looking at the screen, I live on the top part. I live at David Curry's property. I am his daughter. And I actually have something, he is not able to be here today, but I have brought, and also have copies, something that he had written, and he wanted to be read. I'll just say that I stay at home, I'm a stay-at-home mother. I did work for the library for a period of time, but I am now at home with our three children, with my husband. So I'm going to go ahead and start reading what my father had written. My name is David Curry. I am a sixth-generation Nashvillian, former member of the Metro Historical Commission, and have lived on part of my family's century-old estate on Curry Road my entire life. My property shares the longest boundary with the proposed Curry cottages. I oppose the current development plan. My reasons will be brief. As proposed, the plan has several major issues. One, the construction of a public road that deadens into the side of my property. This was proposed by me, by the developer, several months ago. I rejected that plan. The reason for the proposed public road, which conceptually would cross through not only my property, but my mother's, is in order to gain access to my deceased uncle's property, which currently has no public entry from Curry Road. The developer wants to gain access to that property in the future, because he has taken out an option. He is, he does not own it. In fact, his plan showed how he would develop all of our properties, including tearing down my great-great-grandfather's 1850s house. This proposed road was, would, as currently conceived, give this developer control over how myself, my mother, and our heirs could potentially develop this property in the future. I don't see how he can even submit this proposal without our consent, considering how it would impact our property and development rights. As stated, he owns nothing except the current five-acre plat. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we get that letter, too? Can we, just make sure we have it on record, just so we keep it for the record. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, I'm Betty Curry. I live at 934 Curry Road. I'm the mother of David Curry. I have lived in this area for 69-plus years, on this same property. I'm against anything in development here. I have not agreed on anything as far as developing, getting rid, selling my property, or anything. So I don't know where the agreement came from, that I was in agreement to let them run the driveway across David's property, and then across my property. It has not been done. I will tell you that the structures that you have on here is not in compliance with what is on Curry Road. There is nothing on Curry Road that looks, or in this neighborhood, that looks anything like the building that they want to put here. So I would say that this would not be desirable for me, or I don't think anyone in the neighborhood, we have discussed it at many meetings, and I cannot find anyone that would even give second thought to having something like this put in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, welcome.
My name is David Lyles. I live at 521 Vincent Drive, which was mentioned that, I guess, would be at the south end of this property, on the other side of Curry Road. I agree with what they've said, that this does not match the neighborhood. It doesn't meet anything that's in the neighborhood, as far as the size of the property or the houses. He mentioned several neighborhood meetings that I was never aware of. Apparently, if you don't live within 600 feet, you don't get notice. And if they don't put a sign out to let you know that you don't get noticed that way either. This particular sign got put out on the third, which was six days, or three days before the last meeting. And that's the only way I knew that they were going to have one then. And I sent notice to you guys to, that the sign was not out, and was told that it didn't have to be put out. So I'm not sure how that works, and don't agree with the way that you send out notices, or whoever does that for you, for the neighbors. And I've been there for 26 years, and just like to keep the neighborhood the integrity that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In the discussion, we'll talk about, we can talk about notice. Welcome. Come on up.
Yes, my name is Ronald King, and I own the property at 948 and 950 Curry Road. And I'm presently building a house there. And about a year ago, Dale &amp; Associates had like a meet and greet down at Glengarry School. And about 25 to 45 people attended from our neighborhood. And after the meeting, not one person that I had talked to liked what they had heard that went on in the meeting. And most of the, most of the houses in the neighborhood have at least a half acre or more land per house. I personally don't like that they can build 18 houses on the five acres. I think that's way too many right now. But it's zoned that way. So I'm asking not to allow the SPR zoning and keep the RS-10 zoning. And I repeat, keep the RS-10 zoning, because there's nothing in the neighborhood that would resemble this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal? Two minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I think a lot of the discussion that was had was actually the property that's north of this. It's not included in this SP, but it is worth mentioning. The property that my client has under option does have access off of Curry Road, it does have access off of McGawatt. When we submitted this proposal, planning asked us to put together a sort of a master plan to include everybody's properties, including the strip that Ms. Curry still owns, and her son still owns. And as a result of that, this is the only point of access for the future that really works. Just because that access point is there, doesn't mean it's inevitable that it's going to go through their property. It's there in case their properties do develop. And it allows, you know, a decent development pattern, as I had mentioned, to allow those properties to develop, most likely under the existing current zoning. When my client talked to Ms. Curry, again, on this other piece of property, there are historic buildings there that he would preserve. That's aside of what we're talking about today, however. So the houses that are proposed here are equally in size as the houses that are around them. These are two-story houses, they have plenty of square footage. And I think, again, a lot of the confusion, a lot of the discussion, has to do with properties that are north of this, that are not really being considered on this proposal. My client is still looking at that, and most likely, you know, if he does come back, he'll come back under the current zoning, and he'll continue to work with Ms. Curry. She's a great lady. I mean, I actually went to the site, I walked it with her myself. This property is pretty encumbered by floodplain. She's sitting right next to the floodplain. And when we did a, sort of a master plan, we actually showed how a road could be created that would allow her to access off a better street connection in the future. And of course, that may or may never happen. But as planners, you want to put a plan together that has, you know, some ability to do things in the future. And that's sort of what this plan, that is exactly what this plan does. And that's the reason why that little stub out of the road is there. It's for the future. If someone decides to develop those properties, then they would have access to it. But it doesn't provide my client any access to their properties. It doesn't do that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I had to click public and close. How about we start with you, Commissioner Gabel? Go first.
Just a quick thing of staff, this road that we keep talking about, does it just kind of go up and stop? I mean, how does that, it seems like a very awkward thing if it's never extended.
So generally, with developments such as this, given the current policy, the neighborhood maintenance policy, this location is common for recommendation from staff to encourage connectivity to the broader neighborhood. This particular portion of a new public street would stub to the property immediately to the north, to set up a future connection.
And Commissioner, just to clarify, if you'll go back to the, to the context view that includes sort of the properties to the north, yeah, there you go. So when we initially, so the current proposal is just what's in the gray area. But there were properties to the north, 160 and 161, and others, that we wanted to better understand holistically if they were to develop, what the right planning outcomes would be. So it isn't unusual for us to provide for a stub road for future connectivity if we think it can better accomplish goals. So in Nashville, I think one of the tough things about our work is we do develop lot by lot, and property by property sometimes. And so, but I think we can't, can't preclude sort of looking holistically at neighborhoods. And so, as I think the applicant said, he's providing for a future connection. If it doesn't happen, then that is okay. We will review each property and proposal based on its merits at the time that it comes in. But we don't want to foreclose on a good outcome down the road.
I get all that. I'm just, I'm just concerned about a very awkward-looking, 100-foot-long thing that just stops, and then the side street on it. But that's, that's just kind of me. I guess, the lots to the south of this, are they, how large are those lots? Like along Curry, Curry Road there, right there?
Are you referring to parcels 52, 53, 54, 55, along the southern portion?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of how that context works, along with what we're continuing up Curry.
The subject property, subject site is roughly just over five acres, so two acres sounds about right. I had the eye on.
But from a, from a frontage rhythm along Currywood, they're proposing four houses a lot that would essentially face Currywood, you'd access them through the back. But is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, the four, there will be four units oriented toward Curry Road. And the units that are proposed along Curry, the setbacks would be consistent with the homes on the west side of Curry, with those structures, the setbacks of those structures as well on the west side of Curry, to kind of mirror that same, a similar character.
Okay, y'all looked at all that?
Correct.
I think I'm going to listen to my fellow commissioners and see where we go.
Commissioner Bacheff.
Do you have an aerial view of the area, not the map, but an actual photo? Okay. Okay, thanks. I'm just going to listen for a bit.
Councilman? It's your turn.
I have no comments, or questions.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I guess the thing that's maybe kind of hanging up, Commissioner Gabel, is kind of hanging me up, too. Can you, can you go back, sorry, to go back to the, one more, the actual plan. So, I mean, in, in general, the way the site is developed is not an issue. It's just this little, weird little thing. I understand, I appreciate planning's desire to make connectivity, but, well, first, I'm not sure, listening to... not sure, listening to the people that own it, that that connectivity is going to happen anyway. And it seems like even if it did, there could be a nicer way to do it than this little odd little island that's going to get created. I mean, so I don't know. That piece bothers me. And you know, I mean, it's, I don't, maybe this needs to be thought of just as its own little island, and then if it needs to get connected, I don't know, maybe that's, this streak can somehow, one day, if ever that were to happen. But I'm getting a feeling just by who the people who own it, that may not happen, and we're just creating this little weird little turn for that. So that's my, that's my issue, this little hard piece to cut, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I wish, Gene, I always ask Gene for a topo map when, when he presents at staff meetings, but it would be better to see if we had a broader topo map, but just if, where that street is coming in. So they're going to have to gain access to this development at some point, and we really want to set this up to create streets and blocks in the future, because these are larger parcels that are going to infill, maybe not now, maybe not tomorrow, but eventually in the future, we've got to plan for those connections. So rather than having another curb cut to the north of this, this sets up the opportunity to do a couple of things. It sets up the street connection. It also allows that house, you can see the footprint of the house just to the north, this street can go in behind that, rather than when that property develops, their access would come straight through that house if it were to ever develop. But in this case, that house can be preserved, the future street connection can come in behind that house, the house could remain. But it's also a ridge line. Where the street comes in, the applicant has placed the future road along a ridge line that runs along a railroad right of way and ultimately ties into the park. And there's a drain, if you can see that potential stormwater buffer to the north, there's a very steep drain right there. So if they pulled the street into this property, they wouldn't be able to connect it to the north because of that, that steep topography and that drain. So they're actually, while it looks funny right now, this is actually the best location to save the, the house to the north, run a future street along that ridge, and then develop off of that, that street without creating another curb cut on Curry Road.
The house with seeming a lot of words on it right below there, if the entry was moved down to there, and then this other road that goes, you know, behind those, it seems like it, it would still be consistent that that could keep going at a later day, couldn't it?
I may not be following you. If, if the street were pulled down lower?
Yeah, if the street was pulled down lower to the house with all the writing on it?
Yeah, yeah, it could. If you see where David Curry, Matt 420, that's where the, the top of that drain really is. So anything above that to pull in would work, if I'm, if I'm following you.
Well, I'm just saying, instead of making this weird little turn that may never get developed, what if that street was moved down to be where the house with all the words is on it?
You could pull that road down, you just want to pull it up into that parcel to the north on this side of where David Curry is. So as long as you can make the tangent of that curve and that new street come on this side of that drain that's labeled potential stormwater.
And even what I was saying is similar to that, but I don't know if we're supposed to be doing all this designing, but if we pull this down, basically, just don't develop that corner so that if, in the future, you do need to connect to that, that's, because we do that a lot too, where we will say, you just can't develop that, that's an easement. So then, you know, if they ever do sell above there, then that can just easily be connected through.
Through an easement.
Yeah, like you just don't build there, and then that way, you, you know, today it, it works fine, it looks fine. I could say, I don't have any problem, I don't personally have a problem with the development. It's just this weird thing, this weird thing looks weird. But if you pulled it down, then you could still have access, and then, you know, like you said, in the future, if you ever do, you could just connect that, you know, whatever street that would be through it. You just make sure it's like an easement or whatever, so they can't build on it, put another house on it, and then, okay, we're, we're ready to connect, and you can pull through.
Commissioner Tibbs, we, I think we, in talking with Lisa, we have a partial solution to that.
Okay.
And we could add a condition that, for the final site approval, the best location of that, that road. I, I think that would, that would help. Would that help you, Commissioner?
That would help me.
Because I, I.
That's just, yeah.
I think the staff understands that it looks weird, and we could make that a final condition.
Yes, so in whatever motion, I don't want to be premature. If, if it is an approval, we can add it as a condition.
Commissioner Tibbs, you have anything else? Would you like to, okay. Vice Chair, Vice Chair, you recognize.
No, I was, I was wondering about the second point that was provided by David Curry about the, the fact that this is in a flood zone, filling in a flood zone. Is that, I mean, I assume if he lives on this property, he's watched what's happening with runoff for quite some time, but.
There, there isn't any designated floodway or floodplain on this property that is under review.
Okay. But the steep elevation that you referenced is to the north of the property?
Yeah, there.
Down?
Yeah, there, there is some, a drain, a swale contour on this piece of property into the north that forms that kind of, that potential stormwater buffer and that line through it. But it doesn't have any floodway or floodplain associated with it. It's just a drainage area.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm somewhat torn on this one. I, I agree, I mean, I see how it sort of fits the context of the property right behind it, but it doesn't totally look like it fits the context of the surrounding area across the street. I don't know. I'm pretty torn on this one.
Are you saying things?
Those, yeah, it goes here, but it's, the clustered lots is consistent with the big development directly behind it, but not with.
The street.
The street around it. But, I don't know, I don't have any other comments right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anything, yeah, Commissioner Bacheff, of course.
So just to clarify, right now, they could build 19 single-family lots. They could split it into 19 single-family lots, right?
That is based on the acreage-only application of the subdivision regulations. Could result in, in fewer than that, but that is what is permitted at this time. And looking at this, we, you know, we kind of try to balance, looking at transitioning from what is some more intense development behind it to Curry Road, through the use of detached units where there are attached units behind it, and providing that transition in over to Curry Road.
Okay. Still thinking.
So that leads us to a motion. We need a motion from the commission, a commissioner.
I'll jump out there.
Okay.
I mean, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Tibbs. I think if we can finesse that road where it doesn't look incomplete without going forward, I mean, if that, if it's never connected, but at the same time, have an easement and a way to connect it in the logical spot, you know, I, I move that we approve with that condition and subject staff reviewing that. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, and let's read that into the, the record, just so we have a clear sense of what the condition is.
So, and up for editing if necessary, so a condition to evaluate the location of the stub road to the north at the final SP phase.
So that would be a proper motion with that particular condition? Is there a second? That's a proper second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right. We, so let's raise our hand. All in, all in favor, raise your hands. And all those who oppose? One, two noes. Four ayes, two noes. And the motion passes. So I think that we can, we have another item that was pulled off the consent calendar. You know, we're looking at, we've been in a meeting for about two hours, so I think we can take care of item number eight very quickly and put it back on the consent. Is that correct? And then maybe we can take a break after that?
That's correct. It can go onto consent with a additional condition as follows. Approved with condition, including a condition that with the submittal of the Malar, the 20-foot setback along the southeastern side of Lot 2 shall be labeled as a Type B landscape buffer yard.
And that is a condition that the developer has agreed to?
Yes.
So commissioners, we would need a motion to put that, item number eight, back on consent, but I want to make sure that everyone is comfortable doing that. Are there any questions?
Make a motion to add it back to the consent agenda.
So we'll add it back on to.
With the condition.
Consent calendar with that condition stated by staff. It's a proper motion, is there a second? Second, all in favor, any other discussion? Seeing none? I'll make sure, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it, and, and item eight is put back on the consent with that condition. So we're going to, if it's okay, I think commissioners, we probably need to take a break, being here a little over two hours, and we've done three cases. That's not too bad. We'll take a quick break.
Thank you, guys, for allowing us to have a little break. We're probably going to be here for quite some time tonight. So I believe there's, commissioners, there's an item that potentially was on, that was on the consent calendar that could potentially be put back on it. And so before we get to item seven, Lisa, item 10, is there explanation on how to get that back on consent?
Yes, the staff reviewer, along with the applicant and some of the members of the community, have been in discussions, and they have agreed that it can go back on to the consent.
And.
Item number 10.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard that it can go back on to consent, is, I don't see any objection to that, we'll make sure, because we try to be fair as possible, great. So item number 10, we'll need a motion to put that back on consent, item 10. Has been a motion, and is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of putting item 10 back on consent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it, item 10 is back on the consent agenda. So now we are on item number seven for the presentation.
Item number seven, it's a request to rezone from AR 2A to specific plan residential to permit 43 single-family lots at 39, 39, and 39, 47, Penhook Road on 14.5 acres. For context, the site is located east of Old Hickory Boulevard, over here, on the south side of Penhook Road. Percy Priest Lake is, is over here off the page. The site contains two residential structures and a few accessory structures. One of the existing residences up here is indicated to be retained on one of the lots proposed for subdivision. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Properties immediately east and west of the site include already-developed single-family subdivisions, with the exception of a single-family parcel located in here, in between a portion of the adjacent subdivision to the west and the site. The existing AR 2A zoning is present across the street on Penhook Road, is, and towards Percy Priest Lake over here, as well as along the Old Hickory Boulevard and Laverne-Couchville Pike corridors. The Pepper Tree Forest subdivision, which surrounds the site, is zoned RS10, and surrounding properties include RS10, R10, and R15 zoning. The proposed SP is located in the T3 neighborhood evolving and conservation policies. Conservation policy on this site indicates a stream buffer that is associated with Percy Priest Lake. The site plan proposes 43 single-family lots. Lots sizes range from approximately 5,400 square feet to a little over 13,000 square feet. Two of the lots will front Penhook Road up here. One of those lots contains the existing residence, which will be retained, and then there's another lot on the other side, which will include a new residence. Although the plan, sorry, I jumped ahead. The remaining lots will front new internal streets that include a cul-de-sac near the southern property line, and it also includes a little loop road that connects back to the main road. Although the plan includes a cul-de-sac and street connectivity is generally a priority in T3 neighborhood evolving areas, the configuration of property boundaries and already-developed sites prevent any street connections to the east or west or south. Additionally, Penhook Road terminates east of the site, over here, which you'll see on the next page, preventing, reducing the feasibility of any eastern connections. The new roads contain a five-foot sidewalk and four-foot planning strip consistent with local standards, and Penhook Road will contain sidewalks consistent with the Collector Street Plan, or the Collector Cross Section, including a six-foot sidewalk and six-foot planning strip. Open space is incorporated throughout the site, including a large open space area near the southwestern property line that includes a walking trail, and some smaller open spaces interspersed throughout the development. The plan includes architectural standards requiring raised foundations, glazing requirements, minimum porch depths, and prohibited materials, and the plan limits the maximum building height to three stories. The SP proposes residential development that addresses Penhook Road, and the development footprint is located out of, outside of the most environmentally sensitive areas, consistent with conservation policy guidance. Therefore, staff finds the plan to be consistent with policy and recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you very much. Very informative. We'll open this item for public hearing. Applicant has 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Welcome. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan. I'm an engineer with Dale and Associates, 516 Heather Place. We took the break as a time to discuss with our, our person who's here in opposition and, and get to know him and find out what was going on, and what we discovered is that we held a community meeting back around Christmas time. It wasn't very well-attended, but nobody was in opposition, so we continued moving forward. Well, there's still some questions within the neighborhood, and so we've agreed wholeheartedly to, to host at least one more meeting, if not to, as we move forward through the council process, but I do believe we have agreed that we can continue moving forward this evening. Really, the only thing to point out about the plan is, it's obvious when you look at the aerial, we're surrounded by RS10 cluster lot subdivisions. They all come in, it's actually one big Pepper Tree. They come in about four units per acre. We knew this was something we were going to have to essentially mimic. We took it a step further. We're coming in at about three units per acre, so we're really RS15 density, and we have wider lots. All our lots are 60 feet wide in lieu of the 50 feet, so we can have a different product, a wider product, maybe some side entry garage-type products, so something a little bit unique to the area. We think it's a great project, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome, Your Honor.
Good morning. Good morning. Good evening. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Sam Coleman. I live at 4037 Pepperwood Drive, Antioch, Tennessee, 37013. I am here today, not as a former council member, but as a resident that's directly behind the property that you have before you, and the neighbors had great concern and came to me and asked whether or not this was something I had something to do with. And I, at the time, I said, no, I did not, and the applicant reminded me back in 2000, maybe 15 or 16, they did meet with me about it. But the concern we had was that they hadn't been. But the concern we had was that there hadn't been a full-blown meeting to discuss the traffic. Penhook Road is about a mile, mile and a half, and we have four development that's being developed now, and the concern we had is that we don't know the scope of the traffic, we didn't know the interest and exit of this new property, there were just a lot of concern. And not to overstep Ms. Lee at all, I told the group that I would come today just to let you know that there were concerns about it, but we want to definitely work with the developers. Some of the issues that they talked with me at the break can be handled at a community meeting. What we propose to do is go back and get with Ms. Lee to see whether or not she would put a meeting together, one or two, to answer the question. I have concerns personally, I'm not acting as a council member, nor am I acting in any official capacity, but I do live behind the property, and I do have concern because our schools are overcrowded in the area, our roads are now, and we just don't have enough answers about the project. So while I can't give permission for the neighbors to say that we'll take a deferral on the process that they asked me to come and push forward today, I will say that I, you know, communicate to the neighbors that we'll talk with Ms. Lee, hopefully she'll have a meeting wherein we can get some of these questions answered. So I'm not so much in opposition of the project, it's just that there are a lot of questions that weren't answered, and had I not came today, I don't know if they would have had the time they needed, or the relief that they felt that they needed from this project. So I'll close by saying that we hope to talk with Ms. Lee, hopefully she can move through the, they can move through the process, she can get the neighbors to a position where we can all share. I'm sorry to go over my time, but I appreciate being with you again.
Thanks for coming down, we appreciate it. Anyone else? Come on up, please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Alice Gentry, I live at 828 Trailside Circle, and I'm in the lower right-hand corner lot of the property. And with all due respect to the Commission, as a native Nashvilleian and a member of Pepper Tree Forest subdivision, the progression of Nashville in the area that you're proposing to develop at 3939 Penhook Road is not in the best interest of our area adjacent to Pepper Tree Forest subdivision or Percy Priest Lake. The roads and traffic to an already saturated area will make things even worse, taking in consideration the new construction on Upper Penhook and in between Laverne-Couchville and Hobson Pike and Hamilton Church. As a homeowner in Pepper Tree Forest, the reason I purchased the property in 2003 was due to the privacy and wildlife that inhabited the area. I have multiple pictures that confirm their territory and for the privacy and continued breeding grounds of multiple animals. This is an awful position to be in. There are probably not a lot of homeowners at this meeting, as HOA bylaws were amended without a vote, even by proxy. Therefore, their homes are rented, and the current residents don't care one way or the other what happens. When I moved into my home, it was stated in the bylaws that there were only to be single-family dwellings, which is not the case anymore. The wildlife has been moved from their primary territory throughout the area due to the new construction and to the woods behind my home. There are skunks, deer, fawns, groundhogs, and raccoons who are looking for a place to raise their young. I'm sickened that the territory they deserve is proposed to be abolished by money. I chose my home to have peace, quiet, and nature around me, which I have had, have had so far the last 15 years. Today, my plea is that nothing is disrupted, the land the animals have left. They have the lake close by for water and vegetation, namely my flowers, but I don't work, I can work around that issue. The animals need their safe place, just as you and I. I just ask that you put yourself in my shoes and protect the nature that I've been blessed with. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, Michael Garrigan, Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. We, as far as to speak to the traffic, we did a traffic access study, and we accept all the conditions of approval that the Traffic and Parking Department has put on to this project. And again, I wanted to reiterate that this is about 25% less dense than what the subdivision, the large subdivision surrounding it is, and we did that on purpose. We are trying to preserve through open space as well as preserve tree canopy on the larger lots, and not just postage stamp, come through and bulldoze the whole thing. So I hope that makes sense, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Tibbs, you wanna go first?
Sure. So that whole connectivity thing, definitely, you could see where, if this won't have that connectivity, and I can, I can definitely, both sympathize with the applicant that, you know, it doesn't have it, but, and it moves around a lot. But I do feel like I'd wanna hear a lot more about the traffic study on Penhook. The fact that it's less dense than the sound is definitely favorable that it is, less dense than what's around it. It seems like, though, well, first, I'd say contextually, and I think consistent with Nashville next, this probably little piece probably does kind of fall into being able to, you know, to be changed this way. But I am concerned about how this all-in exits out onto Penhook Road. I don't see another way out, so you definitely have to be able to access your site. So, you know, in general, I've been talking a lot and not saying much, but I guess really, I'm pretty favorable of it, I guess, but I just, I wish there was a better way to kind of deal with all the traffic that will go on Penhook, maybe if it was even less dense, but generally speaking, I think it's consistent with policy, and I think I'd be in favor of it.
Counselor? Commissioner Michelle?
Can you tell me what this lot to the east is? Is that something special? Is that developable? What is that thing?
It's, it's open space, it's open space associated with the Pepper Tree subdivisions. So this open space goes over here, and then on the other side is another open space area that's platted, it's open space.
But, and that strip to the east is also open space that's owned by that, or part of that neighborhood?
Yes, right here.
So that'll be maintained as open space?
Yeah, that's on the other property, it's not, it's not.
But it's not developable?
Unless their HOA decides to develop in open space, no.
Likely not, given that the approval of that subdivision was likely contingent upon the set aside of open space, and the lot yield is likely based on the open space being set aside.
Okay, I'll just keep listening.
Commissioner Gump?
My eyesight's not what it once was. What is this inside the loop road?
You're asking about right in here?
Yes.
Oh, it's, it's open space, I'm sorry, you can't see it very well, but there, and here is open space, and then down here, outside of the, the lots down here is open space, and then there's also, because of the stream buffer that runs through here, this is all not located in any lots, this is also just going to be retained as open space. And then there is also a 25-foot, or 20-foot landscape, passive open space around the site that's gonna be held in an easement, is passive open space.
I think on the whole, I kinda see how it works.
Bishop?
I don't have any significant comments, I think, I think the point that was made about, again, just making sure we're tracking infrastructure and schools and things that are happening in this part of Nashville, I think from a development perspective, what's proposed fits in with the context around it. But I think it's a lot of units in a very dense area, and just making sure that we've got adequate, we're thinking about infrastructure needs in those areas. But I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to approve the project with conditions.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? There's a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and it is adopted with conditions. We are now on item nine.
The next item on this evening's agenda is item nine, Old Matthews and Webster Road Concept Plan. This is a request for concept plan approval to create up to 21 lots on properties located at Tony Road Unnumbered, Old Matthews Road Unnumbered, and 2504, 2506, and 2528 Old Matthews Road. The subject parcels are outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is currently zoned RS 5, which requires a minimum 7,500 square foot lot size and is intended for single-family dwellings. The site contains two land use policies, as well as a supplemental policy established by the Hanes Trinity Community Planning Initiative. The first is conservation, which in this instance identifies steep slopes present on the site, and a conservation policy is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. The second policy is T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to maintain the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. The Hanes Trinity Mobility Supplemental Policy states that guidance from increasing connectivity in developed areas and establishing a street network in greenfield areas, and in this instance, the concept plan is consistent with the mobility policy as the plan proposes to enhance the existing street network. Before you is the site plan, which again proposes 21 single-family clustered lots. The lot sizes range from 3,808 square feet to 23,359 square feet. All 21 of the lots that are proposed will front new public streets. The concept plan proposes three new public streets, and each will be classified as a local street. This network of new streets will have a single connection point to Old Matthews Road, shown on the concept plan just to the southeast. The new local streets will provide future connections to the north and south, as two of the proposed streets will stub into the northern and southern property lines. These connections will provide an opportunity to increase overall connectivity for the surrounding neighborhood, which is consistent with the circulation goals of the land use policy for the area. Each new local street will include a five-foot sidewalk and a four-foot grass strip consistent with the local street standards. The existing Old Matthews Street frontage will be improved to meet the requirements of the Major and Collector Street Plan, which requires a six-foot grass strip and a six-foot sidewalk. A standard C landscape buffer is proposed along all property lines that abut existing lots, consistent with the cluster lot provisions in the zoning code. The cluster lot option in the zoning code allows for flexibility of design and creation of open space and preservation of natural features in single-family and one- and two-family zoning districts. Within a cluster lot subdivision, lots can be reduced down to smaller base zone districts. With this plan, the applicant is proposing to cluster the parcels to a minimum lot size of 3,750 square feet. The cluster lot option does not allow more density than would be allowed under the RS 7.5 zone district. The cluster lot option allows a reduction in lot sizes in order to work with existing topography, natural features, and create more usable open space. In cluster lot subdivisions, a minimum of 15% of the gross land area is required to be preserved for open space. In this instance, of the total 5.2 acres contained within the site, 1.4 acres will remain as open space, or 27% of the gross land area. The proposed concept plan protects the sensitive environmental features on the site by placing the development footprints of the most sensitive lots, lots 17 and 18, in areas which require minimal amount of disturbance when development occurs. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions as the concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations, the requirements of the zoning code for a cluster lot subdivision, and all reviewing agencies have recommended approval.
We'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. Handout?
I made 10 copies of them, that's enough.
Come on up, state your name and your address, appreciate you coming down.
My name is Chris Koch, I live at 1013 Gilmore Avenue, and I'm the owner of the property requesting to be subdivided. With, with the subdivision request, you know, first and foremost, we wanted to stay within the existing zoning of RS 7.5, and then also stay within the existing land use policy of a T3 neighborhood maintenance. So I, I'm not sure exactly who's opposed, this subdivision request received one letter of opposition, so I'm gonna make a bit of an assumption that that is who is opposed to it, and, and so I just wanna address a few points made in the letter, if that's okay. The, the opposition, I believe, is the owner of the property adjacent to our property, so in the map that you've got, you can see the property lines in blue is, is the property we own, the property lines in green are owned by Ms. Taylor at the top of the hill. Her, her letter states that if subdividing is granted, the placing of 21 houses on five acres is putting a subdivision within a subdivision, that it will increase traffic on a two-lane street, and more accidents will occur due to low visibility of the property location. The most important thing for Ms. Taylor is that their house and property will be boxed in, and their driveway will be infringed upon. So I wanna make a few points based on that. First is, Old Matthews Road is a north-south connector road, it can easily handle the vehicles of an additional 21 houses, and the engineers, you know, did traffic study reports on that. The subdivision within a subdivision comment, this is not gonna be a new subdivision, it's going to just be Webster Drive, but instead of a rocky road that you can barely drive a car up now, it's gonna be a paved city street. It's not gonna have a new name, it's gonna have 21 houses, whereas the street immediately south of Webster Drive, which is Yocley Drive, has 20 houses. So it's consistent with the existing neighborhood. The, as far as more accidents due to low visibility, there is plenty of visibility when you come down Webster Drive and reach the T into Old Matthews Road, and nothing would, would change there. The, the most important point I wanted to make is Ms. Taylor stating that we would be infringing upon her driveway. Actually, Webster Drive is a private road, it's not a city road, and we own the property of that rocky road going up the hill on three of our parcels, and so for years, those living at the top of that hill have been driving over our property to reach their property. Normally, I would say, well, that's, that's a concern, we have to make sure that's addressed in any kind of subdivision. However, on the other overhead map that shows the ownership of Ms. Taylor's land, you can see she owns land that connects to Old Matthews Drive. So they would have the ability to create their own access, all on their own property, going up to their property, and so subdividing the property that we own would not in fact box them in, they, they would just create access on property that they currently own right down to Old Matthews Road. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes, oh, nobody got the.
Sorry about that. Michael Garrigan, Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place, we are the engineers on the project, I just wanted to point out a few things. The stub roads, the public stub roads will provide access to, future access to all surrounding properties. The existing drive will be maintained from the new public road to the north property line, and I also wanted to just clarify or just make clear that this is a subdivision, because everything tonight's been an SP, this is a subdivision, and it does meet the subdivision regulations. Actually, it's entitled to 25 lots, we're proposing 21, so we ask for your support, thank you much.
Thank you, sir. And you have two minutes, applicant has two minutes for rebuttal, and anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Well, let me make sure, are y'all in support? Nope, okay, nobody in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hello, please state your name, and you have two minutes and your address.
Okay, my name is Michelle Taylor, 2520 Webster Drive, formerly 2520 Old Matthews. I'm in opposition of this, I listened to the gentleman say that the driveway, I won't be infringed upon, I have another way of coming in and out from, from what the history I have, unless the lines have been changed. Webster Drive is a private drive, and it's on property that was owned by my sister and And the other thing is, to me, it is creating a subdivision within a subdivision, because you're trying to put 21 houses, or 22 houses, whatever the number is, on five acres. They will be clustered together, and I've just heard from the recent fires that have been going on with the new houses, that with them being so close together, it's a safety issue. And the low visibility that he spoke about, that I sent to the planning commission, when I'm coming down my driveway, Webster Drive, and I have to stop and look, if I don't look two or three times before I come out onto Old Matthews Road, I've always, almost been plowed down by cars zooming around there, because you don't have the visibility to the left as you're coming down. I'm all for growth, but to put 20-plus houses on five acres, I don't understand it. And I mean, I don't, and I'm in opposition of that. And not only one other thing is that that land that I own at the top of that hill has some historical value. I don't have time to go into that right now, because I don't have the time, but I would really like to have looked at, can we do less houses instead of putting 20-plus houses on five acres? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Hello. My name is Dorothy Dobson, and my address is 2005 Gooch Street. And I own the property where Webster Drive comes up. And it seems like somehow, over the time, every time they do a new sketch or drawing, there's a little bit more of my drive that ends up in their property. I'm concerned about the property boundaries, the lines. Yes, it is difficult when you come out from Webster onto Old Matthews, because there are kids, teenagers, they fly around. They're just like, they're on a racetrack. And if you're not careful, you will get knocked sideways. People have had accidents up there. That's the biggest thing. And then, I was thinking, because my property is lower than that one, all those homes there, what about the drainage? You know, when it rains now, it runs down the hill. And yes, the road is in disrepair, because when they put the three houses on, earlier this, well, they still build it on. On Yoclee Drive, they just came up and came across my property and cut a little road in and did, put their stuff, had heavy machinery coming through there, because they said, well, we can't use Yoclee, because it's too tight. There's nowhere to park. And that's true. That just shows, it's crowded up there. And I want my road fixed, but I've tried to call and tell them to stop going on and put signs up. They've taken the signs down. They keep driving over, and they're just really not being good neighbors. But my time's running out. And as my sister said, it does have historic value. During the Civil War, there was a lookout for the Union soldiers, because when you're up at the top of the hill, you can see virtually all of Nashville. I can see all the way out to TSU's football field. I can see all the way to the fairgrounds and parts of each Nashville, but there are more hills over on that side. Oh. Well, thank you for your time, and I'm just concerned about the density, the drainage, and the traffic hazard.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Essentially, the confusion here is this is an old parceled-off area where there was a private drive that served several five-acre tracks, and the private drive is on each individual lot, not in its own, on its own parcel, is what I'm trying to spit out. So that is essentially going to be replaced with a new public road. Access will be maintained in all directions, exactly how it is today. That will not change at all, and it'll come back out onto Old Matthews at the same location. So we'll be required to make sure site distance is available and things of that nature with public works, with the final plans, you know, so that there's safe turning movements and everything like that. And it will be improved along that short frontage, which hopefully will create some slight traffic calming from the screaming vehicles coming down Old Matthews. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Michelle, you want to go first?
Yeah. So I heard what the applicant said about Webster Drive, but on his map, I don't see it drawn in as an actual public road. In fact, I barely see it at all. Can you all explain the status of that?
Sure. So Webster Drive is a private drive, so it's not going to show up as any sort of right-of-way on the plans. It cuts across several pieces of property. The adjacent piece of property that was spoken about is here to the north. There currently is a drive that comes across these properties. So what's being done with this plat is you'll see here, where my mouse is, they are establishing on this plat an access easement that will get this property out to these new public roads that are being built as part of this development. So in other words, it is still providing access to this adjacent property through this short stretch of easement onto the new public roads that ultimately goes back out to Old Matthews.
And who will be responsible for maintaining those stretches?
The access easement is on this property and will be part of this, it will be part of this development.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Counselor.
So that easement, will it be unimproved? I mean, how will they be able to get to their houses?
It's in the location of the current driveway. So it's an easement over what is the existing current driveway. And so it's not changing the access to that property. It's placing an easement over the existing access to the public road.
What about the cut curb? I mean, will it be any disruption to the homeowner to be able to get in and out of her house?
Advocate.
We're more than willing to work with them throughout construction to keep that access drive open, up until the point that the new curb cut would open up on the new road. Does that make sense?
No. I'll tell you why no. Because she didn't know. So clearly, you didn't tell her that.
The existing driveway runs through about four properties, and it comes and then turns up. That will stay open throughout construction.
I think that's what she's concerned about. How is she getting out of her house?
Yes, it will stay open, and we'll talk to her about that after the meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I think from just subdivision, it meets the requirements, but the road is our issue. Is there any, was there any discussion with the applicant to go ahead and improve this easement, not just really, you know, make it part of their, I mean, it's an easement, but make it part of it, or so that it's not, it's kind of a, maybe I should look at you, but is it just, you know, kind of discarded right now? We couldn't even tell where it was until we looked at it. I'm afraid that, maybe it's not going to happen, but that all this will get developed, and then this will be just kind of an afterthought, and then she won't have the same access to her home that she used to. She'll have an easement, but she'll be cutting through a yard almost, but do you know what I'm saying by that? Can we require more updates or upgrades?
Yeah, I think I'd ask the applicant to come and speak to what has been discussed.
Yes, sir. I just spoke with my client. He's more than willing to add a condition tonight, stating that he will, it's a gravel drive today. We will clean that gravel up and pave it up to our property line.
Last chair.
I don't have any additional comments. I understand the rose now. I'm happy to make a motion to approve staff recommendation with the additional condition that the access easement be improved.
Commissioner Goble, let's, Commissioner Goble.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
You go out of order, and I got confused.
So Commissioner Goble seconds that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
And so it's proper motion, properly seconded. Any other discussion?
Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it, and it's adopted. So we're on item 11. If everybody could quickly, hold on one second. Let's, give me, if everybody, it's not on item 11, if we could get you all to settle down a little bit. Thank you. Item 11.
All right. Item 11 is a request for concept plan approval to create up to four lots on 2.88 acres located at 3,700 Woodlawn Drive, north of the terminus of Lynbrook Road, in the RS20 single-family zoning district. The site is located mid-block between Wilson Boulevard and Bowling Avenue to the east. For context, West End Avenue is to the north, and Montgomery Bell Academy is over here at the top left. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Before I get into the details of this case, I do want to provide some background information. At the May 10, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission disapproved Case 2018-S-046-001, which was a concept plan with five lots, which included this site at 3,700 Woodlawn and an adjacent parcel. Following staff's recommendation of disapproval as the proposed subdivision did not meet the compatibility criteria for infill subdivisions, and also that not all agencies had recommended approval. The proposed subdivision under review, which is Case 2018-S-117-001, is a new concept plan for four lots and does not include the adjacent parcel located over here. The site contains an existing residence, which is indicated to be retained and included on one of the lots proposed for subdivision. For reference, here is the adjacent parcel again, which is not included in this proposal. The adjacent parcel is an existing buildable lot. Here's a view of the site as it relates to the entire block face from Wilson Boulevard to Bowling Avenue over here. All of the lots are proposed to be accessed from a new public street, which would generally align with Lynbrook Road south of the site. The site is zoned RS20. You'll notice that both sides of the Woodlawn blockface include RS20 zoning properties. Additional properties in and around Woodlawn have been downzoned to single-family districts over in recent years. Properties to the north and northwest are generally zoned for one- and two-family residential, and then properties to the south and east are primarily zoned single-family. The site is located in neighborhood maintenance policy, which is intended to preserve the general character of developed residential neighborhoods. While Nashville Next policies provide limited guidance for subdivisions, Metro subdivisions regulations control how land is divided and the pattern of development to reflect different contexts and character. The proposed plat would create four lots ranging from approximately 20,000 square feet to over 37,000 square feet. All lots would be accessed from a new public street here, which would generally align with Lynbrook Road located south of Woodlawn Drive. Proposed Lot 4, right here, contains an existing residence, which is indicated to be retained with this subdivision. The subdivision regulations include compatibility criteria for infill subdivisions in neighborhood maintenance policy areas. The proposed lots meet the minimum requirements of the RS20 zoning district, and the proposed lots will have frontage along a public street. Section 3-5.2.D of the subdivision regulations require that newly-created lots in areas that are previously subdivided and predominantly developed must be comparable to the surrounding lots in regards to frontage, area, setback, and orientation. Surrounding parcels is defined as the five R, RS, AR2A, or AG parcels oriented to the same block face on either side of the parcel proposed for subdivision, or to the end of the same block face whichever is less. In this instance, proposed Lot 4, which is shaded in yellow on the screen, is located along an existing street, Woodlawn Drive, and Lots 1, 2, and 3 are located along a new public street. Therefore, only Lot 4 is reviewed against the compatibility criteria for infill subdivisions. The surrounding parcels used in this analysis are shown in a light purple. Beginning with Lot frontage, along Woodlawn Drive, Lot 4 must have frontage at least equal to approximately 123.68 feet. Proposed Lot 4 has 188.98 feet of frontage and meets compatibility requirements for frontage. For Lot area, along Woodlawn Drive, Lot 4 must be equal to or greater than approximately 37,363 square feet, and proposed Lot 4 is approximately 37,363 square feet, and therefore meets compatibility requirements for area. For street setback, when the minimum required street setback is less than the average of the street setback of the two parcels abutting either side of the lot proposed for subdivision, a minimum building setback is included on the proposed lots at the average setback. In this case, a minimum building setback line is not required to be platted for Lot 4, since the existing structure and existing setback would be retained. However, future structures would have to comply with the setbacks as established by the zoning code. And finally, both lots, or Lot 4 is consistent with the orientation of surrounding parcels, and all reviewing agencies have recommended approval of this application. While there is a consistent lot pattern along this section of Woodlawn Drive with no intervening streets, this proposal introduces a new street that changes the configuration of lots and may alter the character along this block. However, the proposal meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations for an infill subdivision. The proposed concept plan differs from the previous plan in that it does not include the adjacent parcel to the west. The exclusion of this parcel from the proposed development results in one new lot fronting Woodlawn Drive rather than two new lots, as previously proposed. The street layout was also modified, increasing the size of Lot 4. Based on the subdivision regulations definition of surrounding parcels, Lot 4 meets the requirements of the surrounding lots, and the proposed subdivision complies with Section 3-5.2, the compatibility requirements of the subdivision regulations. Therefore, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant has 10 minutes. Come on up. And out of the 10 minutes, you can reserve two for rebuttal.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio. My address is 1,005 North 14th Street, East Nashville. I would like to kindly request two minutes for rebuttal, please. The goal for this project was to create a plan that is consistent with the community plan in place, that meets the subdivision requirements, and preserves the existing historical house on the site. You can see in the attached package before you that the character of the existing home site and the value that it contributes to the community. This large, I'm sorry, this parcel within the Woodlawn community is a uniquely large lot comprised of 2.88 acres with a base zoning of RS20, which allows for 20,000 square-foot lots. The land use policy for this area specifically acknowledges that there are underutilized parcels in this area, and that such areas may be developed, subject to appropriate design that transitions in building type, massing, and orientation, in order to blend new development into the surrounding neighborhood. We would like to thank the planning staff and this commission for this assistance during this process and working with us to come up with a site plan that fully meets all the subdivision requirements and all the zoning requirements that are in place. As planning staff stated, the fundamental difference between this plan and the plan that was voted on before you disapproved last is that this one fully meets all of the subdivision regulations, whereas the previous submitted did not. I want to close with thanking the Woodlawn community and the area council member, Murphy, for their participation and input in this process. And I want to thank you very much for your consideration, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Kleinfeldter. My address is 2904 23rd Avenue South, just down the street from this. My address is 2904 23rd Avenue South, just down the street from this. Really, I'm going to talk about a few different things than the plan itself. I guess one of the good things about being on the Planning Commission is that you get to hear a wide variety of matters. You set land use policy, you make recommendations on zoning and site plans, PUDs, and you approve subdivision applications. The way you review those different items, as you well know, is very different. You have a lot of discretion, significant discretion, when you're making a recommendation on zoning change, and the land use policy is pretty much up to you. I mean, it's obviously based on the community, but you have a lot of discretion there. Plats are a different matter. And I know you've been told this before, but... And you have a letter on your desk from George Dean, who... I can't avoid the pun, but George is the dean of land use law in Tennessee. He really is. And most of... Some of you may know, he actually wrote the book on Tennessee land use law. In my request, George prepared a short legal analysis, which we have sent you, about the Planning Commission's duties and whatever discretion you do have when reviewing a plat. If you haven't had the chance, I'd ask you to read that letter. But let me summarize it. He basically says that if a plat meets all legal requirements, including the subregs, then it must be approved. This is true, and it's unfortunate, I suppose, from where you're sitting, of course, but even if neighbors are opposed. That's how the process works, regardless of whether it's unpleasant. So, my request to you is that during this public hearing, you focus on whether you're hearing things that show that this plat does not comply with something in your regulations or in the zoning code. Your staff has reviewed it and determined that it does meet those regulations and the zoning code. I do need to hit one specific issue. Your staff report includes a condition regarding height, a limitation on height. It's my understanding that those are usually done if the applicant agrees to it, and we're not able to agree to that. And it says a two-story height limitation note would be placed on the plat. That's similar to this whole issue of what discretion do you have? That simply is not a subdivision regulation issue. State law is very clear that height limits are a zoning matter. So, there's nothing in the regs that gives the commission authority to determine height restrictions. I'd hoped it was going to be taken out. I hoped staff was going to say that, but they didn't. So, I need to go ahead and ask respectfully that you, when you approve this, that you have that condition removed, since it is not consistent with your authority under the subdivision regulations. Thank you.
I'm Inez Pennington, and I am part-owner of 3700 Woodlawn Drive. You've already heard from some folks who are adamant that our small subdivision of four homes on approximately three acres will be totally out of character for this section of Woodlawn Drive. But in Exhibit 3 in your packets, the satellite view, you can see our property is already totally out of character for Woodlawn. We're the aberration. Nowhere nearby does this much vacant natural land exist, and there's no home in the middle of it. See that our house is down in the lower-right corner of this huge tract, and that it sits right next to another home less than 30 feet away from it. We are not a mansion on an estate lot. Please see Exhibit 4, the next page, for street views of the homes next door and just across from us. They're privacy screens effectively blocking the view of these homes. Numerous privacy screens all along this section provide the dominant character of closed views, but then opens up into an expansive vista of our woodsy, rustic, vacant land. No screen. And our property has looked just like this longer than anyone alive can remember. So, naturally, over the years, folks have become very attached to this expansive, open, green space, and they have taken visual possession of it. But it's not a public park, and a view of it is not guaranteed. We appeal to the commission to rule by the law and not by the loudest opinions in protection of our family's basic property rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you guys will have... The applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, and if you'll all line up for me, so we can... There's a lot of you, and one thing that we ask is that people try not to repeat themselves and say the same thing over and over again.
Mr. Chairman, as president of the Woodlawn Neighbors Association, I request five minutes for presentation.
It's fine. Five minutes. Thank you. Please state your name.
I'm Rob Stein. I live at 3611 Woodlawn Drive. I believe it was Mark Twain who said that there are lies, damn lies, and statistics. His point was that sometimes mere numbers fail to reveal the full extent of an issue. This is one of those times. This fundamental proposal was presented at Trinity Lane. The land was divided identically to what has now been submitted. The only significant change has been the exclusion for development of what was previously designated as Lot 1. This change in presentation was done to mitigate the true consequence of the ultimate fate of the current proposal. One of the main reasons that the original proposal was voted down by, I believe, seven to one, it was because of the double stacking of homes that would have resulted. That proposal and the current one both result in double stacking on the eastern section of the property of Woodlawn Drive. What the current proposal tries to do is establish double stacking in two stages. First, this current proposal, and then reserve the front lot on the western part of the property for later development. Surely, no one is so naive as to expect that that lot will remain undeveloped. The final result would be double stacking both to the east and the west, with the ultimate outcome of five homes on the current property instead of one. I dwell on double stacking because that is totally incongruous with the zoning area under consideration. Nowhere on this corridor of Woodlawn Drive is there double stacking. This proposal is totally incongruous with the neighborhood it seeks to occupy. Without a doubt, this proposed development will adversely affect immediately adjacent properties to the east and west, as well as to the north on Brighton. The Carrows, who live immediately to the west of the property and who would be most negatively impacted by this plan, have asked me to speak on their behalf to ask for disapproval of the plan. However, it is not just the Carrows, but the overwhelming majority of the neighborhood on or near this property who have asked me to speak on their behalf. This property... And this includes people not only on Woodlawn, but also on Lynbrook and Brighton as well. People on Brighton are also affected by virtue of proposed home placement and concern regarding downhill drainage. Please note that no one else spoke today in support of this proposal. As you know, Nashville is a city of neighborhoods. Many neighborhoods throughout the city feel under attack by unfettered development. We are fighting to preserve the unique environment that we currently enjoy and the reason that most of us moved here. This is a section of the city known for its estate properties and for the old-growth trees that adorn virtually all of our properties. This proposal, plopped right down in the middle of our wooded corridor, will irrevocably and irretrievably destroy one of the key elements that make our neighborhood distinctive. By even conservative estimates, this proposal, with its common driveway and obligatory building site preparation, would destroy a minimum of 65% of old-growth trees currently on this lovely plot of land. The zoning regulations do stipulate latsize, setback, and other numerical criteria. Most significantly, they also stress compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood. In this situation, while numbers may add up, they don't tell the full story. That is what Mark Twain was talking about. As neighbors, we are not anti-growth. We are for responsible development of this property that is compatible with our neighborhood and that would also enable preservation of the majority of old-growth trees currently on this land. The current proposal under discussion fails miserably for compatibility and is totally at odds with the remainder of the adjacent properties and those of the entire Woodlawn corridor on both sides of Woodlawn Drive. We ask that the zoning board reaffirm their original decision to deny approval of this plan and to enable us to preserve the unique and distinctive neighborhood that we love. I thank you for your consideration and for your service.
Thank you, sir. Next. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Craig Sussman. I live right across the street from the Pennington property at 3615 Woodlawn Drive. I've lived there since 1983, and we are all very proud of the way our neighborhood is. Today, as I was driving to work, I realized that I've been driving by my house and down Woodlawn for 41 years, almost a daily basis when I go to work. I was fortunate to be able to buy the property there at that time, and it's a very unique corridor. When you look at... When you look at the maps that were shown, you can see that the lots, all on our block and the next block, are all over an acre and are very, very wooded. That's why it's Woodlawn Drive. As I was driving in this morning, I saw a sign, and it said... It was on Hillsborough Road, and it said "Tree City", that we've been a famous tree city. We've been ranked for 23 years. One of the big concerns that we all have is that there are clusters of neighborhoods which have lots of trees, and that's as historical as anything. And we really want to keep it, and we do feel that this development... Which is really five houses in that lot. And it's no different than the proposal you turned down in May. So, we thank you and appreciate it. And I guess the other thing is, it seemed like Mr. Kleinfelter was threatening the commission, and I don't think any of us should be threatened. I think he basically said, and as I hear from one of the family members, "You're being told that you have to legally turn... approve this." I don't think being threatened is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Diane Sussman. I live in the same house my husband does. But I was the one that purchased it originally because of the trees, because of the neighborhood, because of the beauty that was part of Woodlawn Drive. I wrote to you recently about concerns of double stacking, and I recently saw a piece on Channel 5 about the possibility of losing three historic places on Music Row due to progress. If we allow everyone interested in making money at the expense of what attracted us to Nashville in the first place, then we all pay the very high price of destroying the charm of each of our lovely neighborhoods. Please let us never lose sight of the fact that without our homes and neighborhoods maintaining their charm, we stand to let contractors, builders, and special-interested parties ruin our city. Belmead would never permit this. Whitland Avenue doesn't want this. Hampton Avenue doesn't want this. Golf Club Lane doesn't want this, and neither does Woodlawn Drive. Thank you so much for letting me speak to you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. I'm going to try and stay on script, because I think this is kind of an emotional topic for some of us, me included. Glenda Hatfield, 12 years, 3948, Woodlawn Drive, asking the commission to vote in opposition of the Pennington property at 3700 Woodlawn Avenue. Here we are again, neighbors on Woodlawn Drive, trying to protect our lovely corridor. We are in an estate-size... Our area is an estate-sized lot with tremendous character, charm, and history, one of which being the Carrows that was mentioned a moment ago, which is right next door to this proposed property. Many of the same neighbors that have voted to downzone our lovely street and have met on many occasions and discussed this development on many, many, many times. We are consistent in our response to development, that this is not harmonious with our street. It's not in keeping. It's not harmonious. It's not in keeping. If you've driven down Woodlawn lately, you'll see incredible estate home lots, many of which have been or are being renovated. Over the years, my husband and I, along with many of our neighbors, have brought in incredible craftsmen, architects, for both the homes and the land. You'll see original windows, original columns, original architecture, award-winning designers that have worked on these incredible homes, an incredible amount of effort and money spent on the infrastructure, including the trees and the look of our street. It's very special. It's a very special corridor. Four homes on this particular lot is not in keeping. I'd like to cite three properties that have elected to purchase adjacent lots to their home, not to develop these lots, but to preserve them in the estate-sized lots that are in keeping with our street. They have... They could have very easily decided to develop these lots, and they didn't. We just ask that you not approve this development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Bunny Porter Shirley. I live at 801 Lynbrook Road. I'm exactly 3/10 of a mile from Woodmont and 2/10 of a mile from Woodlawn. And I drive that road and have to get on to either Woodmont or Woodlawn. And I really appreciated hearing that you were considering not giving... You were trying to impose some kind of height restriction. And once the Witherspoon property was developed from my home, which is 3/10 of a mile from Woodmont, I can see those homes. They're that high. I can't imagine what it would look like as I look out my house and look down at Woodlawn. And when I was at the May meeting, you voted against this road, the extension of Lynbrook. I don't know what's happened, that you've changed your mind, but I was so encouraged when I was at that meeting. I love my neighborhood. It's very diverse. It's got all kinds of homes, and it's just wonderful. But it's delightful to drive out and see the beauty of Woodlawn Drive. So, I hope you will stick with having height restrictions, and I hope you'll vote against having this road, this extra piece of Lynbrook Road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
I'm Robert Covington. I live on Estes Road, which intersects Woodlawn. Woodlawn. Green hills. What lovely images those phrases conjure up for us. Well, Nashville's green hills have long since been mauled, whichever way you spell the term. But we still have... We still have woods. We still have lawns. And we need them, along with our parks. They're the lungs of the city. They clean our air. They absorb our rains. As you consider this and other proposals tonight and in weeks ahead, we simply ask that you think about those lungs, about the cleanness and the greenness that make Nashville a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up. If you all want to speak, if you could line up.
How y'all doing?
Hello?
Good. My name's L.A. Green. I live at 3701 Woodlawn Drive. Just a couple of quick points. The lot that's been excluded, I assume, has been excluded to make these numbers work. And that would, I assume, be a compromise from the owners. And if something for you to consider, if you... When you make your... Make your motion, as part of that ordinance is to have that lot restricted from development forever. Okay? So, I assume that's what... I assume that's what they were offering up there. And the other thing would be the two-story limit. That's a big deal right in there, and I ask you to consider that as well. Again, two-story limit, and then restrict the lot that has been excluded here from development. Put that as part of the ordinance would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Belle Lowe Newton, 3950 Woodlawn. One of the co-founders of the neighborhood organization. I've lived there since 1984. First of all, thank you for this respectful process. I hope that the Penningtons aren't mad at us, because in all honesty, we'd really like to see one house there. We know that is... We know that is not realistic, nor is it possible. I'm a little confused from Mr. Morton when he said one of the goals of the plan was to go along with the community plan in place. As far as I can tell, T3 No Maintenance, I'm reading, is intended to preserve the general character of developed residential neighborhoods. When some change is experienced over time, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. I feel that this proposed subdivision is the antithesis of that. In your former report, you said, "If this pattern of development is allowed, it would change the character of this section of Woodlawn." I don't see how you can approve this, having said that. To Ms. Inez's comments, we've all become visual owners of Woodlawn, of the corridor. We've all become visual owners of the neighborhood. We value our character, the fabric of the neighborhood, as much as we value the price of our land. I encourage you to think about, when you make this decision, when you drive down Woodlawn, is this one you're going to be proud of? When you drive down Woodlawn and you vote, and if this goes through, are you going to be proud of this one? I hope not. Thank you very much for your time and also for your public service.
Thank you. Hello? Welcome.
Hello. Because I want to get through this, I'm just going to read it. "I am John Lane on the property that faces Woodlawn Drive across the street east of this proposed SP. Regardless of any purported organization's name relied on, there is no claim and no proof of any sovereign authority to adversely affect my rights in this matter. Wherefore, it is not of any effect until such time. Not waiving this, the proposed SP is inappropriate and harmful to the character of the neighborhood. It violates the recently imposed police power regulation for general health, safety, and welfare of all necessary prevention of any increased density upon an arbitrarily selected view, which diminishes their vested property rights. The land of the SP is one such selected view and is located in the middle of this property area. It is also further violates my personal sense. I was denied the very same density the SP now seeks. Wherefore, the proposed SP violates this general health and safety and welfare per regulation recently imposed on too few to constitute a reasonable police power, and itself is unlawful, arbitrary, nonconforming application of said regulation. For this reason, a federal action and declaratory judgment as to all authority could be sought. Wherefore, this SP should be denied." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to thank Rob Stein. I'm Harriet Carrow, and he said he was speaking on my husband's and my behalf. We live next door to the Pennington property, and I came back to town so that I could be here for this meeting. And I'm not sure I understood many of the points that were made just immediately preceding what I have to say. But I want to start by saying that I love the Pennington family. They've been my next-door neighbors for 15 years. I feel really emotional about this because they've been great neighbors, and I love their parents. Their sister Jennifer isn't here tonight, but she was instrumental in working with Belle Newton to establish our neighborhood association. And a lot of the things that they cared most about are the things that we're discussing tonight. It's the character of our neighborhood. It's the trees that have stood there longer than your grandparents were alive. And I respect the fact that this property is part of their inheritance.
Ma'am, make sure that you just address the chair. Thank you.
The property is part of their inheritance. I think we can all identify with what our parents attempt to do for us by way of that. But at the same time, I know that in their hearts, and I know that in their parents' hearts, because I talked with them about it, they loved our neighborhood, and they loved the character of the neighborhood. They recognized that the trees were essential in creating the bucolic nature of the place where we live. And I do think that there is a way to achieve what it is their grown children want to achieve by way of an inheritance, and at the same time, protect our neighborhood because it's a slice of Nashville that's very special. Not many slices like this exist any longer, and it's one that's worth preserving and working hard together to preserve. I'm sorry I'm so emotional about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two minutes for a vote. And then we'll counsel lady at the very end. Okay.
First, I certainly want to apologize if there was anything in my words or demeanor or anything that made, sounded like I was being threatening. Some of you know I've worked for your predecessors for seven years and certainly would never, never intend anything like that. And I also want to say, we've heard some really powerful words, and I don't know Mr. Covington, but those were powerful words, and I can't frankly disagree with preserving one's lungs and all those things. But what you haven't heard this afternoon is anything that in any way contradicts your staff report that says that this meets the regulations and that meets all the relevant provisions and recommended approval. As I mentioned before, and it's a legal letter that you have in front of you, says if it meets the codes and regs, then discretion's notably not there to disapprove something. A good analogy is, this is called a ministerial or administrative type of role, that's the legal term for it, and it's like a codes department. When somebody applies for a permit with codes, if it meets the requirements, the codes department, even if they don't like it, even if it's a tall skinny on a lot that still allows tall skinnies, they have to approve it, which is why, you know, we're rezoning most of the town, and they fix some of that zoning for tall skinnies. So this is very critical, though, and Scott mentioned it, and I'll mention it again, and I believe, and staff obviously knows it, and I think you will as well, there is a distinction between this one and the prior plat. And it's not just that the other lot isn't included, because quite frankly, that other lot was larger on the prior plat. The prior plat didn't meet the mathematical requirements of compatibility. So it didn't meet compatibility, and one could argue that that means it doesn't meet policy. T3, I mean, the neighborhood maintenance policy requires you to meet compatibility. This one does meet compatibility. It meets your regulation requirement for compatibility. There's no looking at the harmoniousness or anything like that. Sometimes you hear people say, "I can do whatever with my property," and you know that's not true. There's regulations that have to apply, but the government also has to comply with those. I also want to say real quickly, I walk and bike by this lot all the time, and I live just around the corner, and, you know, I like it too, but it is what it is, and the regulations do allow it to be developed, as with this plat. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel lady.
Thank you. I know that I'm going to probably be a little bit repetitive of where I was two months ago because we are basically looking at the exact same plan. One lot was taken, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Kathleen Murphy, 231 Orlando, for the record. So if you look at this, they have taken out one lot. So the analogy that I've made when talking to some of the neighbors and some of the neighbors who've made with me is, it's basically, you know, the color red, but by a different name. You know, some of the lots have shifted around, some of the sizes have shifted around to meet that mathematical analogy, or the mathematical equation required by the law, but at the end of the day, this is not compatible to the overall neighborhood. Just because you make your own street doesn't mean that we should throw out the lot compatibility of the area. If that's the case, then why should the council just, maybe we should just do away with lot compatibility if there are these very large ways to get around it to create subdivisions and things like that? So I don't have a long narrative today, but I do have a few points that I wanted to get through. I don't think anybody is denying that there is the possibility of this lot subdividing. In fact, this lot has already been subdivided. According to the plats and the deeds and the parcel instruments that I can find on Parcel Viewer, is the small lot that is, that was in consideration when we were here in May that is not in consideration now, was part of this bigger lot. I mean, you can see it on there. It's, I think, Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Subdivision 18, something along those lines. Not an attorney, but, so I'm not going to quote this case law exactly correctly, and maybe if legal counsel knows it and wants to update me. But, so when we're at the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's one of the things that I've learned through case law, is that you have to take into consideration the prior subdivisions of the lot, of whether a lot is buildable or not, and so, or eligible for subdivision and things like that. And I think what's important here is that you keep in mind that just because they took out that lot, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be considered here when we're talking about compatibility and harmonious development in the neighborhood. Because it was, I mean, the evidence is there that it was, this was one big lot originally. At some point, it was subdivided out, and this is just simply another subdivision, I guess sub-subdivision of that. And I think that needs to be considered. I don't think that you can, you can just throw it out because it's no longer part of the, part of the pie. Again, you know, last time we were here, you decided very clearly that this was not harmonious, and all this is, is just a shifting of the lines. Something that you said, and the staff said in the staff report, going back to the May 10th meeting, was that the Woodlawn Drive block face is unique, that it contains predominantly larger lots that have generally remained intact as compared to the surrounding blocks that have developed with smaller lots. This pattern of development, meaning the subdivision, would change the character of this section of Woodlawn Drive. And that still clearly, clearly applies. If we go back to when these neighbors were before y'all in September of 2016, that's when we first came to downzone this part of Woodlawn. We went from, what is it, R20 to RS20. Your analysis, the staff analysis, said it's consistent with policy. It said both zoning districts are consistent with the policy. The policy can support single and two-family as well as multifamily. The intent of this policy is to ensure that the established residential areas develop in a manner consistent with the overall development pattern. The policy does recognize that some change will occur over time, but any change should not disrupt the overall established development pattern. And so that's the action that y'all took in September 22nd, 2016, so just shy of two years ago. Y'all made the, you know, zone change to make sure that the pattern of development here stays consistent. And I think that we can all agree, as you did in May, that this pattern of development will, just goes against your actions and would make you inconsistent with yourself of just two years ago. I have some other concerns about, about this small lot being taken out from consideration is because you have conditions in here about where the access point would be for the existing house. It requires it to be on the new road. I think we can all assume, to some degree, that when that small lot gets a home on it, it's probably going to want to connect to the new road. And so, again, throwing it out and not considering it as part of the subdivision, kind of, it doesn't make sense. I think you have to consider that part of it, and when you're considering the compatibility of the area. Same as with, and I realize this is a little outside of the subdivision regulations, but if you're requiring the sidewalks to be built as part of the subdivision plat, when that little lot gets developed, we might not get a sidewalk there. They might pay the in-lug fee, whereas it's not going to be, it's going to continue to be inconsistent and break up the pattern of development. I know that I had some more neighbors here tonight that didn't speak, and so I was going to ask them, everyone here who I've been meeting with at various times over the last couple of months could raise their hand that's against this development. The reason they're against this is because they, they know the character of their neighborhood. They know what is harmonious. They know the pattern. They see it every day. They live there. And so I think you've got to take into account, clearly, the people that live there are going to know it best and know whether this is compatible and harmonious, and it just isn't. I think I may have reached all of my main points, but primarily, being here tonight, it's because while, while we do expect large lots like this to be developed on at some point, that is their property right, at the end of the day, this is why we have regulations and subdivision, subdivision regulations, subregs, and all of that, is to make sure that we're making good decisions and flowing with the established development pattern, and this clearly does not do that. So we're going to ask for your disapproval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel lady. We appreciate it. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and counsel.
I think I should probably start off, given, I'm sure there's a lot of questions for legal on this one.
That would be a great idea. Why don't you start off and give us your analysis?
Given Mr. Dean's letter and my reading, I don't, I think if the planning commission determines that compatibility has been met, they are required to approve. I've looked at, again, I'd like to just read you something. "We would disagree as to the height restrictions, that the planning commission is not allowed to have height restrictions." I'd just like to read you a couple of things. "The purpose of the subdivision regulations. These regulations are intended to provide for the harmonious development of the municipality and its environs, for the coordination of streets within subdivisions with other existing or planned streets, or with the plan of the municipality or of the region in which the municipality is located, for adequate open spaces for traffic, recreation, light in the air, and for distribution of population and traffic which will tend to create conditions favorable to health, safety, convenience, and prosperity." That's per TCA Section 134303. And in the infill, specifically the infill subdivision requirements, there's a reasonable conditions that the planning commission can add, which are, "The commission may place reasonable conditions necessary to ensure that the development of the infill subdivision addresses any particular issues present and may be necessary to achieve the objectives as stated in TCA 4303A. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, setback or build-to designation, identification of specific building envelope location, building and garage orientation, access and easement locations, and maximum building height. Given that the TCA specifically allows for subdivisions to regulate air, light, and population, we'd argue that height restrictions are in that envelope, and the subdivision regulations in fact envision that."
Thank you, sir. Anything else? We may call on you again.
I was going to say, not at this time, but I'm hoping to answer more questions.
We may call on you again. Councilman, I think it's your turn to go first. Do you want to go first?
Not really. It appears that we already had this discussion before, and I don't see, I'd probably vote against this, but I'm curious to see what you guys want to say.
Thank you, counsel. Commissioner Tibbs.
Well, I definitely understand the, how taking that lot out kind of changes how we interpreted it last time, at least. And this does, you know, as far as this, you know, the, to me, it meets all the subdivision, except it's still, I think we still have to consider the community character. You know, having read a lot of codes and understand the code office, there is a, they have to interpret codes, you know. There are, when we do designs and you look at a code, there's interpretation to it. So that's why we're interpreting the community character part of this. And, you know, the, kind of the red flag was not wanting to do the height, that, you know, I kind of got right away, I'm really not worried about trying to get with the community character because I want to strike that height just to even go further with it. So I'm glad to hear, that was going to be my first question, is that true? Because if it's, you know, if it's something that had to be struck, we'd have to strike it. But that kind of set a red flag that there's already, you know, a willingness to try to get by this community character. So that, I still have that same problem with the frontage of it, this road that does cut right into it, you know, not having this anywhere else along the street side of it. So that's, you know, as far as everything else in it, I can't dispute it, you know. As far as, you know, all the other pieces, they seem like they've, you know, really done a good job of hitting everything. But as far as the community character, I still struggle with it because I just don't, when we blow out of it and you see this cut into it... when we, when we blow out of it and you see this cut into it, that's not harmonious. And, you know, now that we can add back the height restriction, there is a little bit feeling better about it. But I still, you know, I'd like to listen to others. Maybe, maybe someone else can, you know, give me more understanding if I'm, you know, too much thinking about the community character of it.
So our attorney would like to say another word or two?
I would just say that, as I noted, the subdivision regulations are actually laid out to determine the harmony with the neighborhood. So I would say that, given staff has determined that it meets those conditions, there might be less to discuss as to the harmony with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Then I guess nothing else I could tell? Vice Chair.
So when we saw this back in May, was, was the road that's now going to be a public road, what was that? Was it a public road? It was a public road. And if you'll bear with me, I can, I can show that plan. So there were five lots. The lot that is being retained in its existing condition over here, you can see how it kind of slants, there's, it's not a straight line. So back when this was proposed, there's a lot within the subdivision, they were actually increasing it a little bit to straighten it out. The road kind of looped around in the center, and then this, this lot matched this lot. They were both under the area requirement. Now, this, this, this lot is not being touched, and this one kind of goes like this. It's, this was proposed at 29,200 square feet or so. The lot before you tonight is about 30, one second, 37,363. So it's, it's about 8,000 square feet more than this was. And so it does meet the area requirements versus the ones that didn't meet them before. But the lot did change a little bit with the four-lot subdivision. It's more at an angle now, which increased, allowed the Lot 4 to increase in size.
It may be helpful just to note to your, to this question and the previous one, that when we are reviewing zone changes, we use policy to help guide how we would evaluate issues such as neighborhood character and things like that. As vexing as it is, the sub regs are intended to be a more technical review. So I think to the council's comment, the sub regs are, say, are laid out to meet harmony. And to understand harmony, it's the orientation of lots, where you place your streets, how you accommodate open space and the like. But it's a, I would draw a distinction between that and how we would think about character in terms of a T3 neighborhood maintenance, if that.
We still use the policy to help determine some things with subdivision. So if you're in a neighborhood maintenance area, then we still use the policy to apply the, the subdivision regulations, the infill subdivision regulations. But if you're in an evolving policy, then those infill regulations don't apply. And so you can do more develop, more different kinds of development in evolving policies versus maintenance. So it's not that we don't look at the policy at all. We are looking at the policy, but once you meet the subdivision regulations, then you are basically in a position where it's an administrative decision that you have to approve that.
But street placement, especially a public street, that, that is not providing benefit to the public other than these four land, those four homeowners. So, I mean, that street placement is not harmonious with the rest of that street.
So I think that's an important, I mean, if, if you want to lay out the specific concerns that you have with respect to the subdivision regulations, it's important to lay that out. So street placement and sort of, and there is guidance in the subdivision regulations about cul-de-sacs, for example, and closes, and, I don't know if that's a plural, and close design, as well as the location of streets, is, I would say, something that we can contemplate in the subdivision regulations.
It does, the subdivision regulations do speak to block length and length of cul-de-sacs, and cul-de-sacs should come in when there's topographic conditions or when the roads can't be extended, basically, when other lots are in the way so that roads can't be extended. So we found that there was nothing that this subdivision violated as part of the review of this, of the subdivision regulations against this proposal.
But if we were thinking about where a street should go in this block, this is not harmonious where we, where you put a street. And there's no other place in these, in this two-block stretch where you have a public street in the middle of a block. So, I mean, I don't see that as harmonious. But maybe I'm missing the point here. But to me, that's, it's not consistent with other, any other streets in this area unless we go off on bowling, but I don't see that as consistent. And I also think, I mean, I don't know the council lady's case law, I definitely don't know the case law. But I do think that this was one, one area, one giant plot at one point that's been subdivided. It doesn't feel appropriate to make a decision about three-fourths of it, recognizing what's going to go into that, that last lot. I mean, at some point, that seems like we do, that overall picture for that plat needs to be taken into consideration when we're trying to determine what's harmonious for this parcel, this overall parcel. So, but my biggest issue would be the street placement.
Commissioner Gobler?
Well, you know, it's one of these where I agree with everybody. It's a challenge. I, the street placement, it is there to line up with, is it Lynnbrook?
Lynnwood.
Lynnwood? Yeah. Again, but anyway, it is there to line up with that, so that doesn't bother me as much. I tend to think that the lot was subdivided at some point in the past off of this big parcel. How long ago?
That's correct. The front lot was subdivided off at some point. It is a legal building lot.
Okay. So it's already there, whether they weren't included or not, kind of saying, well, you know, it's up to them. I really don't think that even if a house is built on that lot, you'd, if I was down the street, you'd really notice what's going on. So I'm, beyond that, I think it's, it's, you know, it's meeting the standards. It's not a reason that I can understand that we can reject it. That's just me. So I'm inclined to go with the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yeah, I, it seems to me like it does meet all the, all the rules and regulations. The only, I mean, I was under the impression, and maybe you can let me know, that we can't really consider this other lot in, in these calculations, because, I mean, this might have been a subdivision of a much larger lot 80 years ago, I don't know. And we're not going to just keep going backwards and backwards and backwards to whatever it was subdivided before, right?
I would say, I don't know any case law offhand. I would say your reasoning holds up, and I believe staff probably reviews the proposal that's in front of them. But I can't speak to that.
The other thing is I really respect Vice Chair, but you're saying there's no other street that breaks this neighborhood, but there is one right across the street from here. So I find that sort of not logical, that, I mean, I could see that if I lived on this street, I wouldn't want anything changed. It's so beautiful. And I completely understand that. But I also understand that, I think they're totally within the rules here. And from Woodline, the only difference that you would see is you would see this little cul-de-sac, which they've even done the favor of putting this grassy space, or I don't know, green space in the middle of it, which I think they must, I don't know if that's on the plan or if that's just drawn for us. But, so even if you come down the street, what you're going to see is that green space. I feel like they've done the very best they can to stay within the rules, and I don't see how I could vote against it.
Councilman, you recognize?
So when, I, I have a question. Will they have to go to the BZA for the existing house? It, it looks like it's too close to the property line, and it may not meet the setbacks. So when you do more than 50% on a home, you have to bring it to compliance if it's a non-conforming structure. But because this is becoming a subdivision, how will that impact this existing house, the remaining one?
Are you talking about in the back?
The number, Lot Number Four.
You are right. So there's a deck in the back there that they've agreed to take down to, so that it's not encroaching into the rear setback?
I was talking about the, this, this edge. It seemed, and I, I really don't know how close it is to the property line.
Yeah, well, the, the existing side setback is, it's, they're not changing, making any adjustments to that property line. So the, the side setback would be retained as is.
So is grandfather in?
Yes, yeah.
So there's no reason need to go to, I mean, should we check about if they, it needs, it needs to go to the BZA or something?
I'm not aware of any reason they would need to go to the BZA.
Thanks.
Just one more clarification. So basically, because staff said it does meet the character, I can't argue that. Is that quite what I understood?
Well, you, you need to be, according to the, the council and our director, you need to be crystal clear on why you disagree with the staff report and provide a reason why it does not meet the reg, the subdivision regulation.
And the attorney can, and the director and the attorney can.
You can disagree with us. I think we would just need to be specific that the disagreement would be rooted in the subdivision requirements. I think sometimes we use character very broadly here, which makes sense, but when I think of character, it's very often how we're talking about policy. And we use policy explicitly in our review of zoning applications. And so I think if, if you were pursuing a disapproval, it would be important to talk about it in the context of the subdivision regulations.
So it is time to make a motion from a commission. The lawyer can't make a motion.
I'll make one to keep us moving. I move, I recommend approval with conditions as consistent with the staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? And there's a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, let's do by hand, let's try it again. All in favor of staff's recommendation, raise your hand. Three. All opposed? So we need another motion. Because we, you know, it's a tie, is my understanding. So the motion doesn't pass, so we'll need another motion from someone. And the bad thing is somebody's going to have to change their, probably, somehow.
I got a question, maybe that'll.
Commissioner, you recognize?
The trees that were mentioned on the lot, has there been a survey of the trees and how big they are, and are they in consideration on this?
A tree survey was not provided with this application. And it's not typically a requirement with concept plan applications. That would, maybe that would be a question to the applicant to see if he would be interested in that, I'm not sure.
Come on up.
To answer your question, there is a tree survey. There are some very mature trees on the site. They provide instant value. They're large, old, mature trees, and they are something that we want to work around with the building footprints. All of these lots are in excess of the minimum lot sizes, you know, within the area. All of them greatly exceed 20,000 square feet. And so we feel confident that we'll be able to work around the trees within the buildable footprint that's remaining with the five lots.
One more question. With the kind of problems that people in the neighborhood had with this lot, if I keep cutting it up, it seems like the, the only way that we could avoid all the issues that they had would be to cut it into three lots, all five into three lots. And that, when I really think about it, it just still doesn't make the view along Woodlawn better. So I, I think that, again, this particular plan is in full compliance, and I, I don't think there's a way to cut this up that would make everybody happy.
Can I ask one more question? When we did the rezoning in 2016, we left out Hanover Square, right? That was not included in that when we went down? I can ask the council lady. Because I remember we saw this a few times, and we kept taking out parcels.
Counselor Lisa.
Yeah.
So you can see the RS-20 kind of boundary here.
Okay.
And then this is R-20 here. R-20 here. RS-20 south up here. This is also RS-20, even though there's this line, it's because they were done at different times.
Right.
So this is all RS-20. R-20 here behind it, and to the side.
Here's a color-coordinated map.
Okay, yeah, I remember.
So can I make a motion?
Hold on one second. The Vice Chair says, floor, Councilman, are you?
Oh, no, I was just, in terms of trying to, to think about consistency in that, Hanover Square is sort of setting a precedent for a different, I would argue, we sort of already excluded that when we did this rezoning of that area to try to create a harmonious stretch of Woodlawn. And if you don't look at that, that street stuff, the length of the street is not harmonious with anything else on that block that's been treated as a whole.
That's a good point. Councilman?
So can I make a motion that we change the, from, how many lots is there? One, two, three, four? To three, three lots. I mean, it meets the subdivision regulation, but we're just changing the number.
So if I'm understanding, the three lots would, three lots that orient towards Woodlawn?
It'll be just the same layout, but it'll be, instead of four lots, it'll be three lots.
I mean, I think, I think you can make a motion, but it's important to just put on the record, and Commissioner Farr is laying.
We don't, we don't have a plant, plat for that to determine that if it meets the regulations either. So if you're going to do something like that, I would recommend, I'd ask the applicant if they're willing to change it, but I would, I think you need to defer in order to change the plan so that we can review whatever plan. But if the applicant's not willing to make the change to the, to the plan, then that might be a moot point. Because this is their application that you're considering, not something different.
Okay, I was just trying to stick to the regulation, so that's why. So I would like to ask them if they would agree to a deferral, so they can go back and change it into a different density.
So is the applicant willing to work with us?
We would not like to have a deferral. We'd like a vote on the submission that is before you today, please.
So I'll make a motion to disapprove staff recommendation based on the incompatibility of the street placement with the character of that surrounding area that has been designated in the rezoning of Woodlawn, excluding Hanover Square.
That's a proper motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor of a disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? No? All right. So we probably need to do a motion for a deferral. So there's a motion, it's a proper motion for a deferral, and there's a second? So is, there's a motion, it's a proper motion for a deferral, and there's a second. Any other discussion on a one meeting defer, want to do one meeting defer? Is it?
Yes.
For a one? And so in the motion, it's that the public meeting would not be reopened? And that, okay. So that's a proper motion, defer one meeting with no public hearing? That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second?
So you always ask us for direction with the deferral. So I don't know what we're exactly asking. Well, I think, other than to get more commissioners here that we'll have. Right.
Is that what it is?
We can also agree to sit down with the applicant and review the current subdivision and talk about the street placement. And I would say when it comes back to another meeting, we will have a different set of commissioners.
And consistent with that, I'd like to, I mean, I think, I think the applicant's heard all of our concerns and, and the neighbors' concerns, and I think all of it's legitimate. I think we're all concerned, it is a very special neighborhood. We're all concerned about the impact of that. Anything they can show graphically that would help show that this is compatible or not compatible with people on Woodlawn, that would really be helpful.
Any other discussion? There's a proper motion and second in front of us. All in favor of a one meeting deferral with no public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it and deferred one meeting. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back for item 19. If we could get everybody to, we'll resume our meeting and we've got four more items. So we are now on item 19 for the presentation.
All right. So item 19 is a request to rezone from RS 5 to specific plan zoning on property located at 1300 North Fifth. This is approximately 10 feet north of Douglas Avenue in East Nashville. The intersection of Douglas and Lushy is about a half a block to the west. And Douglas, which runs just south of the site, is a collector on the major and collector street plan. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning on this site is RS 5. You can see it's at the south edge of a large area of RS 5. There's a large area of SP on the south side of Douglas at the bottom of the screen. That's the SP that allows for detached accessory dwelling units that covers a large portion of this area. More immediate to the site, you have RM 20 on that triangular parcel between the site and Douglas Avenue. And you have mixed-use zoning and some mixed-use SPs to the west around the intersection of Douglas and Lushy, as well as some multifamily residential zoning along Douglas. The land use policies in this area were recently updated with the planning commission's adoption of the Highland Heights study in June. The area, this site is in that red circle on this map, so it is in an area of T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy. The policy on this site did not change with the Highland Heights study. The red boxes with the numbers are portions of the area where the policies were updated. So this was neighborhood evolving before and it remains neighborhood evolving now. As you can see, there is a darker purple color just to the west. That's a urban neighborhood center policy at the intersection. As part of the Highland Heights study, there was some additional refinement put to those policies with a building regulating plan. This is in the R4 sub-district of that plan, which is intended to enhance the neighborhood with greater housing choice and improved connectivity. The R4 sub-district supports a range of residential, including two-family and multifamily, and a variety of different building forms, including a house, a detached accessory dwelling unit, a duplex, a plex or manor house, house courts, or even townhomes. This is the plan for the site. It proposes 10 multifamily units in a single building, which would take a plex or manor home style. The height for this building is limited to three stories and 35 feet, and it has a setback of 26 feet from the street, which is consistent with the homes along North Fifth on this block. All of the access for the site will be provided from the alley to the rear, and all of the parking is located behind the building. The alley will be improved per the conditions of Public Works. And there are sidewalks provided along North Fifth Street consistent with the local street standards. So as a reminder, this site is on a steam. This is the building regulating plan. So you can see it's in the R4 regulating district. It's got a more intense neighborhood center policy and the M1 sub-district, which is intended to support neighborhood centers immediately behind it. And then to the north, you have a lower intensity neighborhood maintenance policy area and the R1 sub-district, which supports that lower intensity residential. So this site is serving, along with the two lots on either side of it, as a transition between the more intense development at the, at the center and the less intense residential development in the center of the neighborhood. And so for those reasons, although the R4 district does support multiple types of residential and multiple building forms, staff was looking closely at making sure that this transitioned appropriately and was sensitive to the lower intensity character across North Fifth and into the neighborhood. So staff has recommended some conditions that this structure be designed as a manor home, would have the appearance of a single large home rather than a stacked flat type building or a multiplex type building. So those are conditions that were recommended by staff in your report. As conditioned, this particular SP will incorporate additional housing choice, which will provide a transition from more intense development along the corridor to the core of the neighborhood in a manner and form that's sensitive to the existing neighborhood character. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item up for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Or is it the councilman? All right, applicant's not here, but is anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing that the applicant's not here. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. We've got two minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Gordon Stacy Harmon. I reside at 1826 Joy Circle. I am chairperson of the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association and, as you may recall, I served on the Highland Heights Small Area Studies Advisory Committee. This rezoning was originally presented in 2016 as RM 20A. Now it's before you again, but as a rezoning to an SP. I have two points of objection to this SP. Unlike other contested SP rezonings over the past year, this plan's density is even greater than those were. As presented, this request is akin to RM 30 with a density of roughly 33 acres, or 33 units per acre. While it's a manor house, the plan of this particular density is of great concern. I will point out that the property immediately to the south is RM 20. With this density, you're not going down to neighborhood maintenance. You're actually increasing density before you drop down. Secondly, parking a lot that's allotted for this particular SP seems inadequate for the lot size. The idea is one spot per bedroom. This idea assumes that most of the potential residents may only own one vehicle. Once those spots are taken, residents along North Fifth may find street parking to become quite an issue. We already have such challenges on other streets, such as Stainback and Pinnock. I would strongly recommend you disapprove this application, or at least recommend the applicant revise the plan density to accommodate six to seven units instead of 10. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Joe Souter. I live at 1308 North Fifth, which is just up on the map you're looking at. Gordon just pretty much ran through most of what I was going to say. I live on, on North Fifth, so I'm standing to lose a lot of street parking here. It's worth pointing out that the bottom right corner of this property, there's a stop sign. So there is literally no street parking in front of this property. The police will tell you, you can't park within a certain number of feet of an intersection. This property obviously is abutting the intersection between Douglas and North Fifth. Parking here is already going to be a problem. Across the street from us is currently a educational sorority that uses the house, I guess, two or three times a month. They all just park in the yard because there isn't very much parking on North Fifth. The street is very narrow. There is no sidewalk. We actually don't even have a curb. The street just runs down into the grass in front of my house. You've probably never driven down this piece of road. It is a dead end. The alleyway is a dead end. The alleyway ends in my property. So watching Public Works back a trash truck down this every Tuesday is hilarious, but I don't see why you would put a thing this dense in the middle of a neighborhood when the only access to it is a dead-end alley. And again, there's, I think, 13 parking spaces for 10 units. Five of those are only seven and a half feet wide, so everybody better own a Prius. I just don't see why this makes sense. You're moving up in density as you go into the neighborhood, not down. This is the most dense thing that I could find on the map, zooming out, spending a lot of time looking at the zoning map. I couldn't find anything in this area that's in the 30 instead of the 20 for residential. Across the street, you guys have rezoned two or three things for development in the 20 area, not 30. I don't understand why this would qualify for an upscale when it's not on a corner, not abutting Douglas, or not touching Douglas, and not touching Lushy. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And I don't think the councilman's here. Applicant's not here. Seeing no one else wishing to speak. Declare the public hearing closed. And vice chair, you want to go first?
Well, you know, I'm swayed by the argument that this is very dense. And I think I remember this coming through the first time when it was RM 20. I know we've had a lot of discussions around this entire corner over the last couple of years. And I guess, I mean, I think we probably recommended coming back with the specific plan because it did give us the design controls versus just the straight-up rezoning. So I'm torn. I drove down North Fifth, actually I have to admit, for the first time the other day, and I was floored at how narrow the street is. It really is truly a residential street. So I understand the concern of adding in too many more cars to this area. And the lot is consistent with the lots next to it, which are not as heavily utilized. So I certainly could see the argument of not changing the zoning, but also know that there are certain areas where it makes sense for us to add some density. And we do want to do it with control. So I'm very torn on this one. I'll let others have a say.
Tibbs?
So back to the study, so if, I know this is because of where it is, it, the consistency of changing it right here, does that, I mean, it seems like it's already kind of, already slipping away. Could you just explain a little bit more again about the consistency with the Highland Heights plan in that area? I guess I don't want to, all the work you guys did to, you know, first went out the bat, we already start, kind of go away from it. So can you just relay again how it's consistent with the plan?
Yeah, sure. I can speak to that if you don't mind, Sean. It is consistent with the plan. If you'll remember, there was kind of a, the goal from the neighborhood leaders and the neighborhood at large was really to preserve the heart of the neighborhood. And in that conversation, though, the trade-off, this is a very exciting, vibrant, growing neighborhood, and the trade-off was because of the development pressure that more development could be achieved along the major corridors and in transition areas. This, this particular location Sean mentioned, the policy did not change other than more specificity. And that specificity in the evolving is based on character and building form and building type. So whereas RM 20 may not have been appropriate before in this location because you could have had a really urban building type in that location pulled up to the street, maybe townhouses that aren't appropriate with that single-family character. So in this case, our policies are more character-driven and zoning is really getting more character-driven, as well as a form-based code as opposed to user-density based. And in this case, you know, the goals of the community in the neighborhood were to create new infill development that was more in character and in keeping with the surrounding context. So finding the compromise with this applicant on the manor house, a house building type that sits back in a similar location to the other houses and the houses that are expected to remain across Fifth Street, we didn't, you know, we felt like we were accomplishing the goals of the updated plan in that form and character and weren't focused as much on the density because it's not something that came up so much during that neighborhood conversation. So the density was not as much in our minds in the review and the consistency with the plan because it was consistent with the character that was laid out in that plan.
My favorite word, character. Well, the, well, I'm pretty okay with it, and especially as, you know, the way you described it being consistent. I guess that was the thing, I just didn't want to start making changes to something you've worked so hard for.
Councilman?
Oh, yeah, I was on. I'm glad I didn't say anything inappropriate. So I'm with him because you guys went through that lengthy process creating that plan with the community and this was the community endorsed. And so I'm going to support this if it matches that plan that it was created.
Commissioner Michelle?
So the one thing, I, I understand the, the structure that you're requesting is going to fit in, but the density does seem also to be a point. And the fact that it is, I guess, going up in density from Douglas back, I mean, is there a way to add a condition that they have fewer units in there? Or is that really irrelevant because of the fact that you are making the structure conform to the neighborhood?
No, I mean, I think that's definitely something that you all can contemplate. It is going in the opposite direction. One thing I would encourage you to keep in mind, though, is that we've seen a lot of, of townhouse development in this neighborhood. We've seen a lot of single-family cottage-type developments, but we haven't seen many of a manor house building type that provides a different, a different unit type. It might meet a different market segment and a different economic segment. And that's one of the goals of the plan, too, is to provide for diversity and affordability within the neighborhood. And this, in its current form, might provide a different unit and some variety in housing types that they don't currently have today. But I think you could ask for less units.
It's a little difficult because we don't have the applicant here to talk to. I, I'm, I would, I'm leaning to defer it, but I'll listen.
Commissioner Dammel?
I, I support the work you've done. I think it's good. I think the manor house concept is good. Having a little bit of a math problem. Three floors. If you have 10-foot ceilings or nine-foot ceilings, you're almost up at 30 feet and you're calling for a pitched roof. And then we're saying the maximum height is 35 feet. So that's a very slow, low-slope pitched roof on something like this. And so I'm, and we've all seen people who've tried to do manor houses on the chief or some building like that on the chief where it's just squatty. You know, you're floor to floors, eight feet in order to get this math to work. And so I'm struggling with that part of it. And, and I'm okay to go with a deferral until the applicant's here and we can talk more about those kind of issues.
Is, just to clarify, is there? Is, just to clarify, is there a change to the condition that would get you more comfortable with the design, given, I mean, you can always modify as opposed to deferral if there's something concrete that might make you feel more confident?
Yeah, and I think, I think my concern is that we've all seen these things where in order to meet this math, you would have an eight-foot ceiling, you'd have about nine-sixths floor-to-floor, and then you'd have a very low-slope pitched roof. And I don't think that's what we're trying to get. And I don't know what the math should be without, you know, drawing it up, but I think that's something that, that is a concern, just, you know, I'd rather see tall ceilings, tall windows, things that are more consistent with the historic character of the building, plus what's, what people are more comfortable in today. I mean, we built a lot of buildings in the 50s with eight-foot ceilings, and we don't like those, you know? And if you're tall, likely, you, you know, you don't feel as comfortable in there. So I think those are the kinds of things that, you know, I, so I don't know what to do on it, but that's just kind of my observation.
That's a, that's a good point. So we, we do need a motion, but it sounds like we have a couple of questions that need to be worked out. We might need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for one, meeting deferral. Is that okay? One, you want two?
Should we go two, or?
Two, if you care.
Two.
Typically.
Probably two. If there's going to be any changes, it's not going to be done in one.
So a two-meeting deferral.
It's a proper motion, and with the intent that the staff talks to the applicant and tries to, you know, you can discuss the issues that were brought up, height and some density.
Possibility of maybe.
But, but that we would close the, we would not reopen the public hearing, be a closed vote here. Okay.
And to add to that, I mean, if it's, they made it two floors, which would reduce the density, but would give us enough to where the proportions would work better, then that would be something that would be easier to digest by everybody.
Right. Good suggestion.
Mr. Chair?
Counselman?
If we don't reopen the public hearing, how come, I mean, we wanted to hear from the, from the applicant.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So amend my mo-
The director's new, we're working through.
amend my motion that we leave the public hearing open.
Okay, so the motion is to defer two meetings and reopen the public hearing?
Correct.
That's a proper motion and second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, ayes have it, and it's deferred to me. All right, we're on to item.
Item 20 is a request to rezone from R6 to an SP residential zoning on 1.03 acres for seven multifamily units at Sloan Road and West Lawn Drive. The site is outlined in red. Here is Murphy Road up here, and we're at the southern corner of Sloan Road and West Lawn Drive. The McCabe Golf Course is over here to the left, and there's an existing rail line south of the site. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The site consists of three parcels on approximately 1.03 acres. The existing parcels contain residential and accessory structures, which will not be retained with this development. This site is adjacent to Cherokee Station over here, which is an existing subdivision and T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. The surrounding area consists of primarily single-family and scattered two-family residential uses, with the exception of existing multifamily development that developed several decades ago, located across the street here. There is also a pocket of non-residential uses along Murphy and 46th, and that, those uses are located outside of the Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. For reference, here is the Cherokee Avenue subdivision, which I will be referencing throughout the course of my presentation. This site is in R6 and is surrounded by R6 zoning to the south and west. Other zoning districts in the area are R7.5, primarily single-family zoning districts. The policy is T4 Neighborhood Maintenance. That's the predominant policy in the area, and it consists of low-intensity residential uses, generally extending north towards Charlotte Avenue and south towards Harding Pike and Westend Avenue. National Next also identifies this area as a neighborhood where preservation of the neighborhood's physical character is more appropriate than infill development with higher-density housing. For reference, the non-residential uses along Murphy Road are in the purple color and T4 Neighborhood Center policy. The site plan proposes seven detached units. Units one through five front Sloan Road and West Lawn Drive, and units six and seven are located behind the street-fronting units at the back of the site, adjacent to Cherokee Station, which is over here. A five-foot landscape buffer and fence are proposed along the eastern property line nearest the existing residential properties and Cherokee Station. Open space, including bio-retention areas, is located at the southern portion of the site. Vehicular access is provided from Sloan Road to a shared private drive located mid-site. The shared drive feeds into a small surface parking lot located between units six and seven, and to the two-car garages, which are proposed on all units. Units six and seven are located behind the shared drive and units one through five. Pedestrian access for units one through five is provided along the street, and pedestrian access for units six and seven is provided from the private drive. The plan includes architectural standards, as included in your staff report. Staff does not find the proposed plan to be in keeping with T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. The SP proposes multifamily development that is inconsistent with the surrounding residential character, which includes primarily single-family and scattered two-family residential properties. Although there is multifamily development located across the site, it is not representative of the area's predominant character. Additionally, the multifamily development is located in the RM40 zoning district and is not adjacent to any residential uses, as the development is surrounded by the McCabe Golf Course and Richland Creek Greenway. This site is over here, and you can see that the, the proposed form and spacing of development on West Lawn Drive is dissimilar to it, to the existing conditions east of the site, which is characterized by lots or units that are more uniformly spaced along West Lawn. Additionally, the plan proposes a higher-intensity development pattern that does not effectively transition to the immediately adjacent residential lots in Cherokee Station. Units six and seven are located at the back of the site, situated at an angle near the southern and eastern property lines, and are designed without adequate separation to the adjacent subdivision. These units have been identified in black, representing the unit's approximate size and location. Although there will be a landscape buffer along the eastern property line here, the rear corner of unit seven is approximately five feet from the front, from the eastern property line, and is angled towards the front side of an existing lot along Cherokee Station Drive, creating a back-to-side, back-to-front relationship between the developments, which is inconsistent with policy. This is a view of the existing home on Cherokee Station Drive, adjacent to the back of proposed unit seven, which will be in this area. And then this is a view next door, also on Cherokee Station Drive. This is a small, open space that's included in the Cherokee Station subdivision, and so the back of unit six will be back in here, behind their common area. Guidance from T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy also explains that parking should be located behind or beside buildings screened from view. The proposed surface parking spaces are located directly opposite of the Sloan Road Entry Drive, and they're also visible from the front entries of units six and seven, which are identified in red. Overall, staff does not find the proposal to be consistent with the T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance Policy at this location. The site is located in a larger area of T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy, in an established neighborhood where there is an expressed interest in maintaining the existing character. The proposed plan does not maintain the established development pattern of the neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommendation is to disapprove.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant? Back again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last one for this evening. Michael Garrigan, Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. You know, it's rare that, that we disagree with staff, but on this one, not from a lack of trying. I think both sides tried really hard to get on the same page. We just couldn't get there, so wanted to kind of go through a couple of things. You know, the, the staff report says the proposal is inconsistent because it is more intense than the immediately, the immediate surrounding residential uses and creates an inconsistent pattern. So I know Abby's presentation, she referenced the RM40 to the west, as well as Cherokee Crossing to the east. So it's, that's kind of our argument from a different angle. Cherokee Crossing is developed directly to the east at a density of 5.4 units per acre, and Park Lane condominiums immediately to the west is 40 units per acre. So we're right smack dab in the middle of those two. So we consider this a transition between them, and we're at 6.8 units per acre, which is much closer to the, the lower end, obviously, than the higher end. The second point to the staff report said that it creates an inconsistent pattern. Again, I'll go back to Cherokee Crossing. That's kind of the focal point here, immediately to the east. We have the same architect that did that architecture working on this project. We're matching their setbacks, we're matching their rhythm and their spacing and their height, mass, and scale, so I'm not sure how that is inconsistent. Now to unit six and seven. Unit six and seven are double-frontage homes, so they will present a front facade on the Cherokee Crossing side, just because that is just an incredibly awkward situation to begin with, have it facing that, that corner street there. But those will look like front doors facing into that open space. And lastly, as to the four parking spaces, those were added later in the game. It came directly from one of the community meetings we've had. We've had several meetings. My client will speak further to that here in a moment, but we've had several meetings, both with the larger community as well as small groups. Cherokee Crossing, the neighbors are directly across the street. And that came as a direct result from one of their requests, is to get some additional parking so that there wouldn't be a lot of street parking and clogging up both West Lawn and Sloan. So with that, again, I would like to point out, the, the density comes as a transition between Cherokee Crossing and Park Lane condominiums. And I'd also point out that the property is currently zoned R6, which allows entitlements of 7.71 units per acre. And again, we're at 6.8, so we're actually lower than what the current base zoning would permit. And thinking, taking it a step further, this is three lots, three parcels, they're all duplex-eligible, so six units could be permitted at the codes department tomorrow morning. We're asking for seven in a much more organized fashion and a much more governed fashion, both by the neighborhood's input as well as you guys, so we appreciate your time.
Is that correct time? Is that right?
Yep.
My name's Yancey Lovless, 987 Greerland Drive. I am one of the owners, the developer, and builder of this project. We purchased the properties back in August 2017. We could develop the properties under the R6 duplex regulations, but we really feel this option is poor, is a poor choice for the character of Sylvan Park, and especially the immediate neighbors. We admire the beauty and design of our immediate neighborhood, Cherokee Crossing, hence, sorry, hence we hired Allard Ward Design to continue that design integrity into our proposal. We reached out to Councilwoman Murphy, Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association, and the immediate neighbors once we had a concept. We presented our concept to SPNA April 9, 2018. We met with neighbors at a specific meeting for this project on April 30. We took those concerns and modified certain elements. Parking was a big concern. We actually moved our garages back so that they could have more parking in front of those driveway aprons in front of each home. And then we got into some very intense individual meetings about stormwater. Everybody's concerned about runoff. I have personally met with both a stormwater representative and seven to six of my immediate neighbors, from Brad Bars, Madeline Walls, to Daniel Schuster, to Eric Cannon, to Matt Bernard, and spoken with Sari Barton, all of my neighbors that are our downstream neighbors, to really understand what this project could impact and what their issues are. We've had several specific meetings with them about that, to, to do some off-site improvements based on our engineering, once that comes back. This, this process is far from over. We are asking for seven instead of six. We are taking this long, drawn-out process in hopes that we can really create a very proud project for both us and Sylvan Park. I appreciate y'all's time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll give you two minutes for rebuttal at the end. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome, and sorry we were running so late. We had a lot of business.
Bernard Pigney, 4604 Dakota Avenue. I'm a chairperson of the Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association Planning and Zoning Committee, and the applicant came to our neighborhood association meeting, made their presentation. We listened to them, we asked questions, and then we voted, and neighborhood association voted unanimously to oppose the rezoning. And what you have to understand, these three lots are on R6. About 90% of the rest of the neighborhood is RS 7.5. So this, these three lots are incompatible with the neighborhood already, and then to add another unit to it makes it even more incompatible. And I'm glad that Mr. Garrigan brought up the reference to the Park Lane condominiums, because back in 1984, the Park Lane condominium rezoning resulted in two things. A lot of angry neighbors, the founding of the Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association, and the councilman running for four more reelections and being defeated four times. So, you know, the Park Lane condominium rezoning was not what the neighbors wanted. We were very much opposed to it in 1984, and that, you know, of course, it's there now, so, you know, I guess you can make a comparison to it, but the neighbors and the overall neighborhood are opposed to it, and I hope y'all will take the staff's recommendation and disapprove this application. Have you got any questions?
Thanks for coming down. We appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal, and then the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had, the community meetings that we've focused on are the, the immediate neighbors around us. You should have three or four letters in your packet of support from them. Those are neighbors that live directly across the street and Cherokee Crossing directly next door. They are in support of this because they would much rather see the seven as presented that's going to flow well along West Lawn and Sloan, as opposed to the six that could be there today in the hodgepodge fashion that the duplex development would have to take place just because of three odd-shaped lots. So that, in addition to the guaranteed architectural requirements, the limitations to two stories, the matching of the mass and scale of Cherokee Crossing, so that it does stay consistent across that frontage, as well as the downstream improvements that we've agreed to perform from stormwater standpoint that are, it's a pretty significant issue for, for five to six downstream neighbors, one of which who gets constant flooding due to an unmaintained ditch, and they've been told it could be five years before it could be fixed, whereas we, we've agreed to include that as part of our plan. So with that, I'll just close with, once again, we are, we feel that this density is appropriate because it is transitioning from 5.4 to 40 units per acre, it's 6.8 right in between, and it's also a lower- And it's also a lower density than what the R6 current land title. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council lady? Welcome again.
Councilwoman Kathleen Murphy, 231 Orlando Avenue. So, this property did come to me, I'm looking back at my file, and I'm not seeing my original notes of when we first met, but they did present at the Sylvan Park Neighborhood Association September 9. And then, April 30, I did have a community meeting. We did try to put together a community meeting for potentially like last week, but with the council extra meetings and things like that and meeting locations, we just weren't able to do it. And so, right now, I've asked staff to try to get a meeting together for this and some other zoning projects that will be before you soon, for the week of September 11. That week is pretty open in between council meetings. And so, I've told them that that's when I would like to have this back before the community. I know that they have done a good job at reaching out and meeting with a lot of the immediate neighbors, but I was a little surprised by the disapproval, because this is a really difficult lot to develop. Like, I'll, like, these three lots are funny shaped and just bizarre. And so, I do feel an SP is probably appropriate here to make sure that the connectivity and the flow of the homes that are developed is done well. But I don't think that we're there yet, based off a lot of the things that the staff points out. And I'd like to have another community meeting to really get that fleshed out from the community at large. I think that there, one of the reasons you don't have a lot of people here tonight is that there was some confusion over it being deferred. And I had emailed with Abby today, because the signs were down, because it was deferred. And so, I'm not sure if everybody, I got a newsletter out yesterday, I'm not sure if everybody really knew that we were all discussing it here tonight. And so, that's where I thought I would do a community meeting either way. But at this point, I don't think it's there yet. I think the staff recommendation points out a lot of things that are important about the flow along West Lawn and the flow along Sloan and that kind of thing. So, I think at this point, you know, I'm not going to ask for approval. I think that either a deferral or disapproval is proper, so we can get that community meeting underway, and so we can go from there.
To me, it feels like it needs to be deferred. So, would you be open for like a, it sounds maybe like a two-meeting deferral?
When's, I don't know when your next meeting is.
The next meeting is September 13, and then the following meeting after that would be September 27.
It probably sounds like the September 27 meeting.
That might be best. That way, we can get community input, get y'all, get it back to y'all, too.
Yeah. Well, thank you, council lady. We'll close, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And if you're okay with that, then we'll try to make that happen. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to defer two meetings? There's a motion to defer two meetings and reopen the public hearing? And that's a proper motion? Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, deferred two meetings. We, we are on item number 28. So, we have 28, we have two items left, 28 and 31. 28.
The next item on the agenda is item 28. The request is for final plat approval to create two lots. The property is located at 1308 Litten Avenue, approximately 300 feet west of Scott Avenue. As a point of reference, this is Litten Avenue to the north of the property and Scott Avenue to the west. The site is approximately 0.58 acres and contains one single family residence. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. The property is currently zoned one and two family residential and lies within a larger area of R6 zone properties. The R6 zoning district is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes with a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet. Site is located in a large area of T4 neighborhood maintenance policy, which is intended to maintain the general character of existing urban residential neighborhoods. Neighborhood maintenance policy also requires additional compatibility criteria for infill The plat proposes to create two lots on the south side of Litten Avenue. Lot one is proposed to contain 12,540 square feet, and lot two is proposed to contain 12,511 square feet. Both lots would take access from Litten Avenue. As you know, state law grants the planning commission authority to review and approve subdivisions through the adoption of subdivision regulations and completion of a technical review. The commission shall approve or disapprove a plat within 60 days after initial consideration. As previously mentioned, the subdivision regulations establish criteria for reviewing infill subdivisions and for determining compatibility in neighborhood maintenance policies. Infill subdivisions and neighborhood maintenance policies must meet minimum lot area and frontage requirements, as determined by the surrounding parcels. In this instance, the proposed lots must have a minimum frontage of 52.03 feet. Neither lot one or two meets the minimum requirements for frontage. In this instance, the proposed lots must have a minimum lot area of 11,586 square feet. Both lots meet the minimum area requirements. The proposed lots are also required to meet the setback requirements of the Metro Zoning Code, and all proposed lots shall be oriented consistent with the surrounding parcels. It's noted at this time that not all reviewing agencies have recommended approval. Staff recommends disapproval as the proposed lots fail to meet the minimum frontage requirements of the subdivision regulations, and not all reviewing agencies have recommended approval. This completes the presentation.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room?
Yeah.
All right, come on up. You've got 10 minutes, you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration. Will Rosenthal, I'm representing the applicant tonight. I want to, I'm here tonight to ask for you to consider approving the property owner's request for subdivision of 1308 Litten Avenue. You've heard the planning staff's recommendation to disapprove the subdivision, based on the community character manuals formula for lot frontage requirements. This lot meets all other community character requirements and only misses the lot frontage requirement by 2.5 feet per lot. After speaking with Councilman Anthony Davis, who is not here tonight, but may have sent you, yeah, I think he's probably happy about that, but may have sent you a note expressing his, how he feels about this subdivision, and study of the character of the larger neighborhood and Litten Street Avenue corridor, or Litten Avenue corridor. I do believe that the parcels with a street frontage of 49.5 feet is not materially different than many of the 50-foot-wide lots, R6 lots facing Litten Avenue and its intersecting streets. As you will see in the package showing the analysis that I've done, that you showed out in front of you. Taking a wider view of Litten Avenue corridor, within a quarter mile, there are 61 R6 lots, of which 33 lots are 50 feet or less of street frontage. Applying the CCM formula to these 61 lots, you get a required lot frontage width of 38.5 feet, including only lots that front Litten Avenue. If you include lots that front intersecting avenues, so essentially the lots that have a long face to Litten, you get a required frontage area, or frontage of 46.2 feet. I also want to acknowledge and applaud the very beneficial intention of the CCM lot frontage formula to protect the community character and understand the intention of that. In order to mitigate the possible impact of not meeting those requirements, I wanted to volunteer, and one of these is already in the, as a note in the application, but I wanted to volunteer that any development on these two lots would be required to have a shared drive access, as well as not putting the buildings four along Litten Avenue. So, you'd have two in the front and then two in the back. And in fact, this plan is actually very similar to one that was approved across the street at 1317 Litten Avenue. I think that was approved two years ago. The only other thing that I'd like to note is that this lot has not been subdivided before, was talked about in a previous case. It's not been subdivided, so it's in its original state since it was created. Yeah, thank you very much for your time and your consideration tonight, and it looks like I can reserve the two minutes, in case there's anybody that wants to speak against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Got two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none? It's late. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing nobody in opposition? Probably don't want to talk about rebuttal. The councilman's not here. So, seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and start over here. How about Commissioner Gobler, you want to go first?
I can. What, what lot frontage did we use for this calculation? Which lots?
So, this slide shows the, okay. So, the, we used the five parcels on either side of the lot that are residentially zoned. So, in this case, we were oriented to the same block base. So, in this case, we were using 227, 228, and 225.
What does the impact across the street? How wide are those lots over there?
Let me just stop, because I think the commission is able to look at a broader area. And I think historically, we have entertained a conversation about that, but based on recent guidance that we've received from council, the legal office, what I would say is we need to be really clear on the record, that if the commission wants to disapprove it today based on the specific lots that we're using for compatibility in the subregs, that's one route. The other is, if you want us to look at a broader area, it would be important to define the broader area for us to look at and then defer, so that we can do that, come back to you and say that we assessed what you wanted. So, the one way to, if you want to go that direction, I know this is a little bit new, so we'll just talk it through, and Bob, Lisa, jump in here, but basically, we would be looking at you giving us guidance about factors, like you could say, again, y'all jump in, but we want you to look at the block face across the street and give us information about that, or we want you to look at topographical features or other kinds of features, and then we can come back and present that information to you and put it on the record. I think there have been an instance where you, it wasn't clear if you were looking at the commission, not you was looking at a broader area and its assessment, and we just need to be much more clear in the record at what area we're looking at.
And I would, that's, we have another court case that will be coming back, that the record was not clear at all on what was being considered. So, I think going forward, this is the proper procedure, if you want a larger area to be considered. And I will add that if we, if we, like I said earlier, inconsistency, I will, councilman, that if we change or start moving around the lots that we look at, we're going to have to do it for every case. So, just, you know, because I think that if we're not consistent, it leads to very confusing things moving forward. And, you know, every developer will be asking us to consider it that same way. So, we have to be very clear and consistent with these standards. And I remember, this was a huge, huge debate, gosh, when was it? Like, maybe six years ago, five or six years ago? And that's when we came up with the specific subdivision guidelines, have a very concrete formula to determine if these are appropriate. So, I add just a little history there for the commissioners to consider, because this is something we will get sued on. As you noticed, we're already sued.
I wanted to give you all the language that's in the subdivision regulations, just so that you can know which section that we're talking about for infill subdivisions. In cases where infill subdivisions meet all of the standards, except for compatibility, which is the case here, these lots don't meet one of the compatibility requirements, which is the frontage. So, in cases where they don't meet the compatibility, what the language of the regulations say is that, if it fails to meet for that subsection, you can consider whether it can provide for the harmonious development by otherwise meeting provisions. You can look at the development pattern, unique geographic, topographic, environmental factors, and other relevant information. And so, that's, that we would want you all to define what you want us to look at to make that determination.
So, I assume there's no unique topographic issues over there and all this. I mean, my only concern, and again, I'm just going to listen to what the others say, you know, we've got a, just, from a statistical data thing, you've only got three or four things you have to look at, which, you know, you look across the street, you look at others, it's, it's a little different on that, on Litten Avenue. So, I am concerned about the rhythm of the street. I am concerned about conflicting with staff's recommendations. So, I'm willing to listen to what the others have to say.
And councilman, did you want to be recognized? I saw you.
No, Mr. Chair, you actually said what I wanted to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you read my, we're connected. We've been here so long.
We've spent a lot of time together tonight.
Let's not share any more information.
Commissioner Bishet.
So, the, the reason that there are only the four, just so I really understand, is because it's, they have to all be on the same side of the street, and they have to all be facing the same street. So, that's why you can't consider any of those other ones.
Yes, there are specific standards in the subdivision regulations that define which lots you use when assessing area and frontage. And so, that's what the staff used.
I'll listen.
Councilman?
No comment.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I'd say, based on the analysis, if you go back to that other one, but just for my visual, in the lots that you've used as compatibility, that it is not compatible. So, I would be, I'd make a motion to go with staff recommendations to disapprove.
That's a proper motion. I'll make sure the vice chair doesn't have anything to say.
So, I'm, I'm inclined towards the proposed deferral, just, I don't like thinking that we're setting the trend for that entire, those three lots, because we are. If we re, if we subdivide that one differently, it's going to allow 225 and 227 to do the same thing. But, when you look across the street and you look at what's happened on Northview, in some way, I feel like the train's already left the station. It's already happened. So, I'm not sure why those three lots, you know, those three lots are going to be the outliers. So, I would be more inclined to go with the deferral, to ask that we look at the lots across the street to determine compatibility, but that's.
We have a proper motion in front of us, so I want to make sure that we, and we have to address the motion before. So, we can either get a second, or we'll have to have him withdraw that motion. Is there a second? It's a proper motion, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second. Properly seconded, any other discussion? All in favor of the disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let's, let's do, oh, gosh, here we go. All in favor of disapproval, raise your hand.
Oh, disapproval, yeah.
And then, all in fa, all, not in favor, raise your hand. All right, it's a tie. So, we'll need another motion.
Never let the six of us feel bad again.
We'll need a new motion. That motion did not get enough, did not get a majority.
I will make a motion that we defer whatever staff tells me, two meetings at least.
I would defer two meetings, and I would include either the characteristics, factors, or other that you want us to evaluate.
I would, okay. I would like you to, a two-meeting deferral, and I I would like you to, a two-meeting deferral, and I would ask that staff consider the lot frontages across the street on Litten Avenue. That are oriented to. That are oriented towards Litten, so 32 to 37. Lots 32 to 37, to determine if these two lot, that lot is subdivided would be compatible with those.
There's actually a duplex lot next to 37, I think, that's two lots. There's two duplex lot, or two lots with two units on them.
Okay.
That would also be facing Litten.
So maybe take the entire block face facing Litten from whatever, front to.
There's a proper motion, second, to defer two meetings and reopen the public hearing. Right.
Are we, just one more clarification, I'm assuming we're in the 60-day, what are the requirements for a two-meeting deferral? Yep? We have a requirement that we need to rehear. We have a time.
This is the first time this has been here. We're within the 60 days.
Okay.
It's a proper motion and seconded.
Just, just discussion, but just be, you know, we're different on this one, but just be clear, though, as you're looking at it, because we would set a precedence, we'd be changing 225 and 227. This is just discussion, you know, I'm not changing anything, but I do feel like that if we did that, we could, we really would be changing it all. So anyway, just, that's my one sentiment.
We're going to evaluate that and give you a recommendation based on the larger area and based on the, what the regulations would normally call for, so I don't know where that will lead at this point until we evaluate it.
Right, and I think if, to the chairman's point, when we hear that, it will be really incumbent on the commission to articulate why it was appropriate to do that, because there may be a number of other circumstances when you don't want to look at a larger area, but there will be folks who say, but you did it here, what's the difference? And so I think that that's the, I'm not disagreeing that maybe this area is at a point where that's appropriate, but that's just a caution, so.
So I'm going to clarify why I'm going to support the deferral motion is not because I support looking at the other lots, but that I'm voting for the deferral motion to move the bill, to move the bill, okay? So that's personally, that's me personally. And we'll have more commissioners, and we can discuss that. But I just think that you have to be, we as a commission have to be careful to create dangerous precedents.
So that's about a very, yes, I agree with that. And I don't feel strongly enough about this to be willing to set a whole precedent, you know, go forward with the precedent changing. So I don't, I made my motion, and it's second. Go forth and decide.
When this, when this comes back, it would be good if we presented all aspects of it, including what was presented tonight. And, because some of us have poor memories, and these things kind of get together, merge together. But if you could, we can go through it, and I think we have a, talk about precedence at that time, but understand all that.
So when you, if you come back with a revised, and you determine that it is compatible based on looking at the lots across the street on Litten, we no longer have the automatic, it meets the criteria therefore. Did that become the new, does that become the new standard for measuring compatibility if we say that we want you to evaluate the other side of the street?
I'll have to read the regulations to clarify that, but this is exactly what I think confused the court on another case and caused them to remand it back to the commission that you will see soon, so.
So there's, there's a few different scenarios that we sometimes face with infill subdivisions, and each of them are treated differently. There's a scenario where you don't have any surrounding properties as defined by the subdivision regulations by which to compare something. In that case, it gives you certain guidance as to what your path forward is. It says that you can look at a larger area if there are no lots defined as surrounding. In this instance, there are surrounding lots, the three that we have utilized. The infill subdivision regulations set out A through F of, these are the things that you have to meet, the minimum lot size, setbacks, orientation, compatibility of those surrounding lots. It then says that in instances where a subdivision meets everything else except for compatibility, which is the situation that we're in, then the planning commission may consider whether it achieves harmonious development by looking at other things, such as development area, geography, and other factors. And then you can approve based on those other factors, if that's the only criteria that it doesn't meet, which is where we are in this instance.
So it's appropriate for us to do that. It just, I just warn the commission that it creates precedence. That's all I'm saying. All right, so we have the motion, and it would be to, and a second, and it would be to reopen, defer to meetings, reopen the public hearing, based on that, that criteria and looking at having the staff look across the street. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, it's deferred, two meetings. All right. We, we are on. So we are on item 28. Oh, wait. We just did 28. We are on item 31, right? So commissioners, let's see if we can't handle item 31. Is the, is the person opposing item 31 here? The applicant is here, but the person opposing item 31 is not here. So, so we can make a motion to approve, would that be, okay? Yes, we would make a motion to put it on consent. So there was, it was not disproved, it was approved by the planning staff.
Make a motion to add this to the consent agenda.
It's a proper motion, is there a second? Second, any discussion about that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, and item 31 is approved and put on consent. And so now we, we have.
Unless, John, you wanted to talk.
Unless everybody wants to talk and hang out, we are on item, we are on item 50, right? Historic, historic, anything in historic?
Just real quick, there's an economic impact study on historic preservation, and it begins this month, and it'll be completed in February. And apparently, the neighborhood concentration overlay for the Edge Hill was approved on the second reading. I don't know if you guys want to add to that, and deferred one meeting. It goes back to council at its first meeting in September.
Excellent, thank you. Item 51, our commissioner that represents us on parks is not here, anything on parks? Executive Committee report? Oh, our work session. When is the, our next work session, Ms. Director?
September 11th is the date, I think I was given.
We'll have that on my, on our sheet. Kelly, do you? September 11th.
So we'll send out another email, Kelly, if you'll, appreciate you sending that out.
Thank you for.
Thank you. And the subject matter, and then anything else on executive committee report? I don't think there's anything else. And then we, anything legislative update? Other than midnight meetings?
Unfortunately, the traffic-driven development, the TOD on Donaldson, it didn't pass the threshold to be approved, and so it failed in the council. So I think people still are interested in transit-driven development, but they had issue with the details of it. So hopefully, we'll see more of them in the future. I don't want people to, I didn't get the impression that people were flat out against the concept. They just had issue with some of the details on, on how it was framed, how it was developed. So just wanted to give some context on that.
Thank you, Councilman. Director?
Just very quickly, tonight, we approved a contract for Lisa Milligan, who is our new land development manager, and I think illustrated tonight her leadership already. So I congratulate her, and I look forward to working with Lisa. Why are you laughing?
She's the reason why we're going long. I'm just joking. Thank you, Madam Director. And I, so tonight, also, there's an announce, you know, one of our other staff team members. This may be his last night. Craig Owensby is retiring after more than a decade of service to Metro, and I just, I felt like I should say something for Craig. He's been an outstanding staff for us, and he's been a great employee, overall, just a great guy, and I know we're going to miss you very, very much, but I'm very envious of people that retire. I dream about it all the time. So congratulations, Greg. I just thought I'd give him a round of applause. And is there anything else? But, Councilman?
Sorry, I just wanted to also say that Councilwoman Karen Johnson resigned. This last meeting was her last meeting, and issues on her list will be handled by Council Member at Large Bob Mendez.
Thank you. Anything else before the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?